Counsel Elliot, very much for that. So, moving on, we need approval of the agenda, but I'm going to go to the deputy clerk, and I think we do have some items we want to move up and others need to be added, so we have quite a list here. So, Ms. Murray, do you want to start?
Okay. We are going to pull staff report I two on Skyfest. That is now postponed to the Committee of the Whole on March the 26th.
And possibly an explanation because we are meeting with the proponents tomorrow. We met with them today and they wish to add, so we're meeting with staff with them tomorrow. Go ahead.
Okay. The next one, I nine, which is the proposed three-plex on McLean Street. There is a late item, a letter, that's been re-brought tonight, and so that one is now going to move from I one, or I nine, to I one and be the first staff report.
Okay.
And staff report I twelve on Fraser River Chevy Buick is going to move and be I two, just moving forward in that section of the agenda. There is a, in, on the council information package, J twenty-two will be, become a correspondence item.
K sixteen.
K sixteen. It'll be at the end of the K items. And the, this is from Mr. Corrick. And the Morton Resmussen letter will put it at the beginning of the correspondence, K one and two.
Okay. So, that was K fifteen, fourteen and fifteen?
Yes. Referred to the beginning of the correspondence.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Rudenberg? Did you have a concern? I know you wanted an item that was in SIP brought forward, and I do believe that is, is that not?
I do, too.
Okay. Okay. With all those deletions, additions, amendments and whatnot, could I have someone please move approval of the agenda? Thank you. Counsel DeParre, Counsel Rudenberg, all in favor, opposed, carried. Next up, we have the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting held February the thirteenth, please. Could I have someone move? Thank you. Counsel Cave, Counsel Elliot. Any questions? Going to call a question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. This evening, we have the pleasure of our Katimavik group that has been in Quinell for a while, and Victoria Blay and her group, she's the group leader, and the group members, and I understand you're going to come forward and introduce yourselves, is that correct?
So, good evening, council. My name is Victoria Blay, and I am the project leader for the Quinell Katimavik group. They have been here for two and a half months now and are nearing the end of their experience here in this wonderful city, and we thought, what a great way to end off their experience, by having this opportunity to come here, introduce themselves to city council, and get a sense of what's going on here in Quinell. And so, I'm going to have them introduce themselves, and also, I'll call up Ainsley first, so that she can give a bit of a background on the Katimavik program. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ainsley Monroe. I come from Arilla, Ontario. I am here to talk about Katimavik as a program. It's a youth-based volunteer program that engages youth from across Canada in volunteer initiatives around the country. I believe we're placed in fifty-two communities at the moment, and we do volunteer work full-time in those communities, both during regular work hours, as well as in the evenings and on weekends. So, we're all really, really pleased to be here at council today, and thanks for having us.
Thank you. And I'm just going to interrupt. John, are you, is this working for you?
Ah, that'd be nice if it went up front.
Okay. Around this side to the microphone and kind of, then you can talk to John and...
Yeah, let's get everybody just follow.
I think they're talking to council, but we'll, we'll listen from here.
Hi, my name is Amanda Usak, and I'm from Toronto, Ontario.
Hello, my name is Cave Lattarout. I'm from Comox Valley, British Columbia, and I'm volunteering full-time at One World Treasures.
My name is Stephanie Toyon. I come from Sainte, Quebec. I volunteer in Dunroven.
Hello, my name is Patrice Rapouxson. I come from Quebec City, where he has the place of the Quebec Winter Carnival, and I work at the Echol Baker Elementary School, French Emerson class and regular class.
Hi, my name's Emily Carrier. I'm from Halifax, Nova Scotia, and I work part-time at the SPCA and at the Native Friendship Center.
Hi, I'm Chantel Bellier. I work at the SPCA full-time, and I'm from Richmond Hill, Ontario.
Hello, I am Alexandre Beaumont-Vachon. I come from Saint-Flician in Quebec, about three hours from Quebec City, and I'm working to Dunroven.
Hi, my name's Holly Ferguson. I'm from Kitchener, Ontario, and I'm volunteering at Seasons House Homeless Shelter and the Quinell Downtown Association.
Hi, once again, my name's Ainsley Monroe. I come from Arilla, Ontario, and I volunteer at Parkland Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Ains Conley, and I'm from Curtis, Ontario, and I work at Voyager with the Breakfast Club, Dunroven, and Big Brothers Big Sisters of Quinell.
And that's our crew, so thank you for having us here in town.
And Victoria, thank you to you, because I believe this is your last contingent of students, and then, or are you with us for a little bit longer?
For the former.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And thank you very much. We enjoy you, and thank you very much for the work you do in the community. So, now, we're going to move on to some resolutions reporting out to council from Committee of the Whole, and we're going to start with some budget resolutions. We have budget from February the sixth and February the twentieth from the 2012 preliminary budget meetings, and I'm going to go to Counsel Coleman to bring forth and move these recommendations, and then I'll get a seconder over to you, Counsel Coleman.
So, each of these resolutions will, as we proceed with them, they have passed in, in our budget process, they've been brought forward for ratification, and each one of these will build the overall budget bylaw that we'll continue to build and work toward doing all of our readings of the final bylaw. So, starting with the February sixth, 2012 budget meeting, the first ratification is that it be recommended, council, that major capital investment in the industry classification be used to reduce the taxation levels of that assessment class only.
Okay. And you're moving that, Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Could I have a seconder, please? Counsel Rudenberg? No other questions? Call a question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Thank you. Counsel DeParre wishes to be recorded?
Okay. The second resolution, that it be recommended to council that no further tax shifting be included in the 2012 budget scenario.
Okay. And you're moving that? Could I have a seconder, please? Thank you. Counsel Briscoe, comments? All those in favor, opposed, carried.
All right. So, then we have the recommendations from the February twentieth, 2012 budget meeting. And just so the public can understand, these, there's sort of a random set of decisions that get made in a sequence. We deal with fairly large lists. We vote on these lists, item by item, each counselor does, and this is a culmination of that sequence of, of, sequence of debating and votes. So, the first one is that it be recommended to council that the drinking fountain and skateboard park at a cost of seventy-five hundred, five hundred dollars be added to supplemental list for approval within the 2012 budget.
Okay. Moving that?
So, I'll move all of these, so we just need a seconder for...
Okay. Could I have a seconder for that? Thank you. Counsel Briscoe, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, number two?
Okay. That it be recommended to council that following supplemental items be approved for budget inclusion in 2012. Firefighter part-year replacement position, fifty thousand, and just to clarify, in a, this is going to be for half the year. In our next year's 2013 budget, this position will be a hundred thousand dollar cost item, but this is just supplementing now to cover the remainder of the year. So, firefighter part-time replacement position, fifty thousand, confined space, high-angle training costs for the same department, twenty-six hundred, security software monitoring costs, six thousand, critical for our data systems, volunteer firefighters' extra wage replacement when they have to come from work to help with fires, it's twenty-five hundred, planning work costs for unserviced area report, and that's around water and sewers, so eleven thousand seven hundred, firemen's spousal support funding, twelve hundred and fifty.
Okay. So, second, Counsel Elliot. Okay. Counsel DeParre?
Thank you. There's not coming on. Oh, too many mics on.
Thank you. Just on the planning work cost for unserviced area report, I like to ask through the chair to the staff, every effort should be put in to get a grant for this work, and when they get, are successful, a council to be notified back, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DeParre. I think you raised that during the budget discussion, so that's good, it'll be noted.
I am raising again, so we have it in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Next up, we have number three.
Okay. That it be recommended to council that thirty-five thousand be added to the 2012 legal fees budget.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a seconder? Counsel Rudenberg? Counsel DeParre?
Thank you. One thing, it's to be recommended, council, to, for the public, they need to know what will be the total figure when this thirty-five thousand dollars is added to the legal fees, and I have raised the question under the previous legal fees spent, and I like to ask, one, the public should be notified, what will be the total of legal fees fund available with adding this thirty-five thousand?
Okay. Ms. Bolton? Is that putting you on the spot? We can come back to that.
I believe the total's seventy-three, approximately around that amount.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to call a question, then. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Opposed.
Okay. Counsel DeParre, opposed, and Counsel Coleman, opposed, noted, please. Okay. Moving on to number four.
Okay. That it be recommended, council, that an additional fifteen thousand be added to the 2012 staff training budget?
Okay. Could I have a seconder, please? Counsel Cave? Counsel DeParre?
Once again, the question, I like to bring that one, again, public needs to know what will be the total figure for the fund available, I think it's above eighty thousand, so please let the public know.
Through the mayor, Counsel DeParre?
Yeah, including staff conferences, staff training, and professional development, we're at about eighty-five thousand.
Okay. And I think that's important to know, that is through all, all areas of the organization. Okay? Going to call a question? All those in favor, opposed?
Opposed, please.
Okay. Counselor DeParre, opposed, carried. Okay. Next up, we have number five.
That it be recommended to council that additional sixty-one hundred be added to the iCompass data management system, 2012 budget, and this is so that all public and city staff can get access to the public information of our duties and diligence.
Okay. Moving it, and Counsel Elliot, seconding. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Next up, we have number six.
That it be recommended to council that thirty-five thousand be added to the 2012 budget for carbon offsets.
Okay. Second, Counsel Cave? Do you want to move? And then, okay, and then question?
That was for projects and not buying carbon offsets, right?
Okay. That's coming up afterwards. Okay. And Counsel DeParre?
Thank you. I do, I, I'm, actually, I'm going to oppose this one, but also, I like to ask, in the, in the plan, when I see five-year plan, there has been slated a hybrid car for the airport, about twenty-five thousand dollar. My question is, if that account can be used by the council for buying those kind of things, if the question is yes, I'd like to know now, because we are going to pile that amount in a account, because I have seen that one in the five-year plan.
Okay. Now, I know we had a little tiny bit of discussion at one budget meeting. Is any member of staff prepared to answer this, or will we get that question back? Mr. City Manager?
If I understand the question, Madam Chair, it's to Counselor DeParre, is this money being spent on a vehicle? Is that the question?
No. This money is going to be piled in a, in an account, and I have seen the five-year plan, there's a, for the Quinell Airport, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar hybrid car slated in the five-year plan. My question is, is that fund, can be used for those kind of things? If the answer is yes, the public needs to know, because I don't think that's a wise use of money by calling it green.
Now, this is for offsets, this one, so are we any?
It's just a point of order.
Yes.
I, I think the essence is that we're establishing this fund so that we can meet our offsets regulatory requirements. What we use this fund for will be a future discussion, whether it's, it's, and as to what's eligible for that fund will be a future discussion. What we're making decision on is a regulatory decision that we have to do this, but we want to use it for local projects.
Okay. Now, Ms. Turner, did that, do you want to add anything to that before we move on?
Just quickly, the regulatory requirement is not here this year. It's likely to come in future years, however. What the dollars are is getting us prepared for those future years, and the discussion, as, as Counselor Coleman suggested, will come back to council in terms of what we will exactly use those funds for.
Okay. So, on that, Counsel DeParre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Further down to question I like to ask, I have seen federal government backed out of that Kyoto and other environmental, like, all those things, and I see the B.C. province also hesitating back and forth. So, is the city, is the only one committed for this kind of thing, and/or city has, will have the option if a province backs out of those carbon offset? And because it raises a concern to me, when everybody, province and federal government are walking away, city municipality, which are little ones, are getting stuck with it.
Okay. Point well taken, but it is a legislation, and we're fulfilling that commitment. So, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counsel DeParre, opposed. And Counsel Coleman, I think seven is a duplication there.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll move on to number eight.
That it be recommended to council that additional ten thousand be added to the 2012 IT contractor support budget, and this is to support our overall IT staff with the demands they're facing.
Thank you. Counsel Rudenberg, seconding. Counsel DeParre?
So, my question is, once again, what we will be spending total on this IT contractor, because we used to have just a IT contractor, which was, we were spending around eighty thousand, and now we have employee and contractor, so what will be our total spending on this function? Please.
Ms. Bolton?
Through the mayor, Counsel DeParre, the total for this contract will be thirty-five thousand now.
Thank you. And I think it's really important to note that absolutely, we are wanting to make sure that everybody knows, but this, this will all come out in, in our budget documents, so there'll be, nothing will be not being brought forward. Thank you. Counsel DeParre?
That's fine. Everything will be coming out. Madam Mayor, I'm not saying you're trying to hide, or anybody's trying to hide here. All I'm saying, when people are voting on it, to public, it looks like only fifteen thousand. It's not fifteen thousand. There's a lot more to it, or ten thousand. There's a lot more to it. So, this total, twenty-five thousand, becomes total at thirty-five thousand. What we are adding, another ten thousand, so, which, each year, we do approve it. It's not that twenty-five thousand is already written in stone. The council has the gesture to reduce or increase it. What we are doing here, we are adding on top of twenty-five thousand, so the public needs to know. Thank you.
That's true. Okay. Because it does say additional. Okay. Moving on to number nine.
Okay. And I just, and I agree, it's very important for the public to get all the information they need, so that's on the website and available from our staff, and all these decisions are part of a, the multi-million dollar framework of capital and operating that make the city work. So, number nine, that it be recommended to council that additional seventy-five hundred be added to the 2012 council training and travel to the training budget.
Okay. And second, Counsel Elliot? Okay. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counsel DeParre, opposed. Okay. And Coleman? Okay. Number ten?
That it be recommended, council, that an additional forty-five hundred be added to the 2012 administrative contingency account.
Okay. And a second, please. Counsel Briscoe? All those in favor, opposed. Counselor DeParre, opposed. Okay. Next up, we have number eleven. It's a reserve fund?
So, this is just establishing the, the fund, that it be recommended to council that staff be directed to establish a carbon-neutral reserve fund of thirty-five thousand, placed in such fund as the corporation moves toward carbon neutrality, and that's that pre-mentioned thirty-five.
Okay. Thank you. Second, Counsel Cave? All those in favor, opposed? No, you had your hand up both times. Counsel DeParre, opposing?
Opposing, yes.
Okay. Okay. Counsel DeParre opposes. Okay. Number twelve.
Okay. And this is just after much discussion, that we're just not ready for this particular situation, but that it be recommended to council that any requests be denied for live webcasting in council chambers using current city Wi-Fi resources based on current technical restrictions and risks, and that's been analyzed fairly heavily.
Okay. Thank you. Moving. Second, Counsel Briscoe? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Number thirteen?
That it be recommended to council that city staff be directed to draft procedures governing webcasting, which includes all costs to be at the expense of the webcaster, and procedure not being disruptive to meeting, and proper code of conduct be followed by webcaster, and many different jurisdictions have had to develop this kind of thing.
Okay. Seconder, Counsel Elliot? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. And now, we have some recommendations coming forward from the February twenty-seventh budget meeting.
Okay. And this is a smaller item, but after fair amount of discussion, this became to the table, so that it be recommended to council that the legislative membership subscription account be increased by eight hundred, with such funding to be taken from council projects account.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Cave? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Oppose, Counsel DeParre? Okay. Number two?
That it be recommended to council that the legislative community support and other fees for service budgets be approved as circulated and amended, and these are a number of different agencies we work with out in the community.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Rudenberg, seconds. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Thank you, Counsel Coleman. Now, we're moving on to, from the Committee of the Whole, the minutes of the delegation session and Committee of the Whole, and there is some recommendations coming out of that, but I'll turn it over to Acting Mayor Elliot at the time to just give a little bit of a highlight, please, if you could, from the March fifth meeting.
I jumped a little bit too far forward. So, we're on the budget overview, then?
Yes, for March fifth.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I've been caught off-guard here. I didn't think that I was talking to any of the budget items.
Okay. No, but you could move right into, and, no, sorry, it's, no, it's the delegation session and Committee of the Whole from March fifth, so it's after the budget items?
Page number, please.
And that's page twenty-four.
That's, there we go.
Sorry, that was my fault. Gave you the wrong page.
No, no. It's all good. Thank you very much. So, yes, we had a number of different delegations showing up. First were the business associations, so we had the Quinell Downtown Association, Bruce Broughton, the president, and Mitch Vick, the associate director, came in and reviewed their accomplishments for 2011 and their plans for 2012, and their budget was circulated for 2011, twelve. Then we heard from the South Quinell Business Association, Rob Motry and Richard LaRoche were here, and they came forward to discuss the association's 2011, twelve budget circulated to council as well. I'd like to go into detail about what these people have been doing for the last year, but the, the agenda tonight is very, very extensive, so I'm going to keep it short. Keep in mind that everything that is written here is online, and if you have any questions about the delegations that came forward, don't hesitate to contact me. Number four, then, the West Quinell Business Association, Sandra Erickson made a presentation, and she came forward to review her report and circulated her budget for 2011, twelve as well. Then we had a delegation from the Quinell Youth Soccer Association, Gilbert Shodel, the association player development director, and Jim Nicholas, the association president, came forward with a slide presentation around their relationship with the city and some of the difficulties they're going through, but they're, they're meeting those head-on and going forward. Next was the Quinell Visitor Center, Patty Morgan from the Visitor Center, she's the manager, and Colin Ketchum, the Quinell Chamber of Commerce president, came forward to present the year-end report on this facility managed by the Chamber of Commerce on the city's Next, delegation was the NASCO, then we had the NASCO First Nations Resolutions, and manager Stessic advised, three resolutions are brought forward as information from a closed council meeting with the NASCO First Nations representatives, noting that Resolution five seventeen twelve has council endorsing the NASCO Gateway Project Plan, and that five eighteen twelve has council endorsing the development of a three-phase power project within the NASCO Valley. And the third resolution moved these resolutions to a public meeting, along with a press release jointly with the NASCO First Nations and the Caribou Regional District. These motions were read into the public record. Next, we had the capital budget voting. Director of Finance Bolton reviewed the capital voting sheet results from council. Also, that's very extensive and is online as well. For all the details, but then we had, we have to, we have some recommendations here. So, let it be recommended to council that the Anderson Drive paving overlay project be completed in 2012 with a hundred thousand dollars from the capital reinvestment reserve and a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars from the general capital funding, and I would so move.
Okay. Thank you. Seconding, Counsel Coleman? Okay. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Next recommendation?
Next, I'm sorry, that it be recommended, council, that eighty thousand dollars required for the new RCMP backup generator be completed in 2012 with the funding taken from the MFA General Debt Reserve, and I would so move.
Okay. Thank you. Seconding, Counsel Rudenberg? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. Okay. You're opposed to the second one, then, with the, from the MFA? Is that correct?
To the eighty thousand, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have another recommendation? Counsel Elliot?
That it be, that it be recommended to council that all prioritized listed capital projects to and including the RCMP building exterior painting totaling eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-eighty dollars be included in the 2012 funding from capital, from general capital, and I would so move.
Okay. Seconding. Thank you. Counsel Cave? All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Next, that it be recommended to council that a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars... dollars, five hundred allocated to the Anderson Drive overlay project be transferred into the capital reinvestment reserve so that all paving projects for 2012 come out of the capital reinvestment reserve, and I would so move.
Thank you, and could I have a second, there? Thank you councillor Briscoe. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, and finally?
That it be recommended to council that all listed capital projects be approved for 2012, funding coming from reserves, grants, and carryforwards that received a yes vote from council, and I would so move.
Okay, second, councillor Coleman. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, is there? I'm sorry. Okay.
This does not need ratification? Thank you.
No, I thought we were done.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so let's now move on to unfinished business, and there was, the first, we have four items, and there was a letter from QPBC with regarding to rebuilding of infrastructure in Canada's municipality. And, Ms. Murray, do you want me to take this? I understand that there was some questions with regard to policy of UBCM, FCM, and whatnot?
This was referred to, this from the February thirteenth meeting, to a meeting at which you would be attending because of your knowledge from UBCM, FCM, and meetings with our MP.
Okay, so I do have information that I was able to gather as far as the infrastructure and the three P, which is a public-private partnership. UBCM has no policy. Speaking to two directors at FCM, certainly the discussion around infrastructure had come up and the need to develop an overall infrastructure program, but nothing related to the three Ps. And I did contact our MP, and he gave me a couple of highlights, which I'll just read for council, that one point two million, billion dollars, P3 Canada Fund, is a merit-based program with the objective of supporting P3 infrastructure projects that achieve value for Canadians, and it is a very high threshold, and it's an alternate method for procuring large and complex public infrastructure, and it will not exceed twenty-five percent of the project's eligibility cost, and it's for direct construction costs as well as development costs, and even if combined with Bill Canada or infrastructure stimulus, it still only allows twenty-five percent. And it is my understanding, and I would look to Mr. Norburn, if, I know we did discuss this previously with our multi-center project, and the thirty million dollars, it's an awful lot of money to us, but it was not a high enough threshold for even any eligibility? Am I correct?
Through, through, to the mayor? Yes, that is correct. We did look at that program, we didn't make any commitments to it, but we did take a look at it, and we had their office do an internal scan, or do a scan really of our, how high our, how high we would rank if we were to apply for the multi-center project, and we did not score very highly for a number of different reasons.
Okay, and before I go to councillor De Par, I'd just like to say, if it's the will of council, I did do some tweaking, and I would be prepared to bring forth a resolution to the next cow meeting, if you'd like to consider it, that we certainly could forward on to our member municipalities as well as to FCM and UBCM on overall infrastructure, because there is a meeting being held of mayors throughout the province in, in Pennticton, and it is around the subject of infrastructure, but we certainly could take the lead. This is a, this is a fairly good motion, I think we need to tweak it a little bit, because we need to make sure that the understanding is, certainly, we have the gas tax money, so we need to make sure that, you know, we, we are including everything that we do get, but if it's the wish of council, I could certainly bring that back. I don't know what the thoughts are here. Councillor Elliot, and then I've got councillor De Par.
I would agree with that, madam mayor. I would like to get some more information on this, and I'd be very interested in hearing your tweaking. One of the informations, one of the pieces of information here that I'm concerned about, and I'm, and I'd like to do some more research on it, I've been trying to, but it, it looks as though there is money available for P3 water infrastructure programs and not just for what we may have running here, and that's, that's something I want clarification on.
And that would be the idea that we just need to encourage for infrastructure funding and not necessarily, not limiting it to any one area, but make sure that it's all-inclusive and it expands. Councillor De Par, and then councillor Rubenberg.
Thank you, thank you, madam mayor. First of all, I'd like to receive that information you have, if you gave us the copy so we can indulge it through. Second one, I like to ask, I read that letter when they're saying either Abbotsford or Calgary will receive federal funding. To me, when the federal government basically dictates who should be getting it, and they're forcing right through our throat, the P3 projects, and I don't support P3 projects, and when I look at it, because P3 doesn't work for everybody else, like in the case of our, when we are talking about multi-center, I don't think of P3, it's a project where there will be a profit, and all the private firms, they do want to have the profit, and on a public facility, very hard to make a profit because they are subsidized, and we don't want to subsidize the private contractor with the public funds. And my question is, we should be calling our MP, Dick Harris, and explain why it's going on and what kind of a step we can take so we ensure not only P3, everybody else gets the funding. End of the day, it's a public funding, it's not a private funding. Thank you.
And councillor De Par, I will forward all of council, which I just received before the meeting, from, from our MP on the three Ps, and I just wanted to say, on the Abbotsford, that was a referendum that failed, and the idea was, Mission would include, but Mission, entire Missions council was replaced, so, and the, and the referendum failed, so they did not proceed, but they had gone to referendum for a water system on the three P. Councillor Rubenberg, and then we must move ahead here.
Thank you, this just sort of backs what director Norburn was talking about. We actually had this discussion at NCLGA this weekend, and the biggest drawback for smaller communities our size is that we definitely don't reach the threshold that they're looking for. They barely look at projects that are under fifty million dollars, that most projects have to be fifty million plus for them to even consider three P from the federal government. So, there's no way that smaller communities like ourselves would hit that threshold.
Yep, okay. So, I will bring that motion forward to the next committee of the whole. Okay, the next unfinished business we had was the administrative report on the taxpayers' hauling of bulk water, and I'm not sure where we're going with this one. Which staff person is? Do I need a staff person to take the lead?
I can speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coombs.
Through the mayor to council. This item has been brought to council, this is the third time, and at the last meeting on February thirteenth, when it was discussed, it was moved that the previous resolution on bulk water reimbursements be postponed for discussion to the next regular council meeting to provide further study time for new council members. So, just a very quick overview of the situation, Mr. Fenton of Westland Clothes asked that he be given a break on the cost of buying water at the bulk water station. He made a presentation to council back in August to that effect. At that meeting, it was recommended by staff that we leave the current bulk water billing system as is with a one-tier billing system. Council asked staff to investigate this matter further and provide options. So, some of the financial implications, for the city, there's a real cost to provide water at the bulk water station, above and beyond the cost of the station itself. These costs include development, maintenance of wells, pumping stations, and reservoirs. Mr. Fenton is expected to cost, or is expected, his cost to purchase water without hauling will be about eight hundred a year, and I confirmed that today, he actually paid about seven hundred dollars last year for water. So, we've discussed this matter at length among senior management. The concern is, there will be a reduced desire by developers or taxpayers to extend water services into unserviced areas, as it would be far cheaper to have water trucked into a holding tank or a cistern at each residence, and it can also be inspected, expected that taxpayers in these unserviced areas who have installed wells will be seeking similar rebates to offset the cost of developing a wall and install, well and installing and maintaining a pumping system. And Mr. Fenton is very conservative with his water usage when it came in at around seven hundred dollars. So, just other relevant information, do you want me to go through all of the relevant information?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. I'm hoping that, unless council has any questions, I, I'm going to councillor Elliot, and I'll certainly take some questions. I know, I hope that they were able to do a little bit more research. Okay, councillor Elliot?
Just a point of order, because you have a table, you have a table motion, and I think we have to go back to that motion and get it back on the table and either approve it or defeat it.
Okay, and our recommendation here was to approve one of the above options, but I would look to Ms. Murray, because I do believe that we do have a live option, a motion, rather, on the floor.
Yes, motion number twelve dash oh five dash sixty-four should be put on the table either before discussion or after, and then either council passes it or requests further information, because it does list the options that the council at that time thought were best to be approved or not.
And what, and just that, what I was trying to do was to see if there was any further questions that council had, and then we could do that, so unless you would like to put it on the table, but do you have any further questions or comments, councillor Elliot, or do you want to bring this back onto the floor, and we can discuss it from there?
I'd like to comment quickly.
Okay.
Okay. This is a, this is a very difficult situation, and I do empathize with the people, and Mr. Fenton in particular, but the way that I see this situation working out is that there are a lot of other people, there are other people on this road and, that are affected as well, and they have gone and spent a lot of money on wells, and I think if we open the door for reimbursement, we should also expect to open the door to people that have put, spent thousands of dollars on wells as, as well, and I don't know that the, the city has that kind of money.
Okay, okay, I'm going to go to councillor De Par. Do you want to bring this motion forward? I see that you were a mover.
Yes, I'd like to move this motion, and...
Just move it to, to the table of the property of council, okay?
Okay.
And could I have a second for that, please? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to, can I speak on?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The reason I'm supporting this option, when we look at, yes, people have spent money on their wells, but here we have a bulk water system which is in the city, which is funded by the grants, and also with the taxpayers' money. To benefit the person or other people who wants the water from bulk water, they shouldn't be paying same price what somebody else is living in a, outside of the city boundary, and that's what is right now. If you are living outside of the city, on a Maple Drive, you come into the city, you will pay same amount of money for the bulk water collected from that place, just like this Mr. Fenton is paying. To me, that's injustice. They are in the city, and when I say moving the option where they have to deposit five hundred dollars and up to thousand dollars, they will be reimbursed, we are not reimbursing their wells, we are only giving them money back for the water they are going to use, and if they use more water, they pay more, and that's what, they should get the benefit, because end of the day, the taxpayer who are living in the city, they have paid for this system, and I will support that. We are not talking about wells, reimbursing people's well. We are only talking, just giving the water for what they will be using for as a drinking most of the time. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to councillor Coleman. Are you on the list?
Just speaking against the motion, because twice staff have brought this issue forward, and twice staff have recommended that, that we not approve, approve this, and it creates an inequity piece amongst water users, and I'm just not comfortable approving something that creates an inequity amongst all the users of water within city limits, and I understand that Caribou Regional District users use the bulk water as well, but I just, I cannot vote for something that staff twice have brought forward and said, don't create this inequity problem for us, it's going to create other problems for us, so I'm just speaking against the motion.
Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to it? And then councillor Cave, and then I want to speak to it.
I'm going to speak in favor of this project, because I think if we're going to expand our city boundaries, we owe it to the residents to provide services, and if we can't provide those services, then what are we doing expanding our boundaries? So, and if, if, this is only for a two-year trial period, then I think we're going to see the, the analysis at the end of the two years, and I just, I just, I, I think it's unfair to expand our boundaries without having the services in place to, to support it.
Okay, councillor De Par, you've already spoke, so I'm going to go to anybody else for a first time. Okay, so I'm going to speak to this, and I do believe that it's precedent-setting. I'm very, very sympathetic to, to those folks, because we've worked for a long time trying to get them water, I think we need to continue to look for funding for, for water, but, you know, it is about being equitable, and I have to support staff as well on that, on that motion. But I'm going to go to councillor De Par, and then I'll call the question. Go ahead, councillor De Par.
Thank you. Inequity is right now created when CRD resident who are not paying for this system are actually getting a benefit. It's not an inequity you will create by giving the facility, the people who are paying taxes in the city. So, my question is, why we don't have a different rate than for the regional district people who are getting for the same price this city taxpayer is going to get, who does pay a lot of taxes and not getting the service? And I, I have to go back again, stating, staff hasn't recommended, staff has given the options, so I don't drag the staff, staff has done their job, so should not be blamed, but politicians are making decision. It says, the council approves one of the above option and direct staff to implement that option. So, staff, let me please clear that. So, staff hasn't recommended anything, so when people are using staff, I have a problem with it, staff has just given the option, it's written and clear.
That is their political opinion, and they're allowed to do that, councillor, okay? So, I appreciate what you're saying.
But, but, madam mayor, please, let me know, speak, the written document speaks for itself, so political opinion, I, I don't care for a political opinion, whoever wants to make political statements. My question is, written in stone, recommendation that council approve one of the above option and direct staff to implement the option. It doesn't say anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so councillor Rubenberg, and then Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. I will be voting against this, because it does say, actually, right above twelve oh five sixty-four, that it was noted by director Coombs and city manager Stessic that administration's recommendation, the first time this issue came to council, was to maintain the current system as is, so it is written here that staff has recommended against this.
And there, it is under number three as an option, so I am going to go to Ms. Bolton, and then I'm going to call the question.
Okay, through the mayor, I just wanted to make it very clear that the bulk water station was always paid for from the water fund, and only people in the city that have water pay towards the water fund, so if there's someone in the city that does not have water, they pay nothing towards that fund, the same as someone that lives in the CRD, so just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. Okay, so, no councillor De Par, I'm moving forward. We have a huge agenda, sir.
I do see that, but, but when you bring another information or let other people speak, yes, we didn't, the, the question is, like, we are passing, we are misinforming the public, where that fund actually came to fund this system is from general tax, to, to fund the bulk water system. It was a grant, there was, there was a grant which came, comes from general taxpayers, and then you have funded the rest of the system, and the city has funded, so that came from a water fund? That's what you're telling me?
No, could we just, Ms. Bolton spoke, and then I'm going to cut this off. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Bolton, just give an opportunity to explain exactly to the people that are watching at home and in the audience, clarification.
So, the bulk water station was funded by two grants, two hundred thousand from WED and seventy thousand from NDI. The remaining three hundred something thousand came from the water fund that is funded by water users.
Thank you. Okay, so, the motion that does, and do you want it read back, or are you, everybody aware of the motion that was made, the twelve oh five sixty-four? Is everybody aware of what that motion is? Perhaps, maybe you should just read it, and then we're going to, going to call the question.
Okay, the resolution is that council approve providing city residents who haul water or have it delivered to residences within city boundaries not serviced by city water, an opportunity for a rebate on annual water charges provided they live in the residence as follows. Program would be in for a two-year trial period, 2011 and 2012. The residents claim it's upon providing proof of water delivery would be reimbursed up to one thousand dollars after an annual user fee of five hundred dollars is applied to their account, and thirdly, that reconciliation of each account would take place in January of the following year after the appropriate application form is completed.
Okay, I'm going to call a question, and hands up, please, all in favor? Opposed? Defeated. Okay, so now we need a motion to, for direction for staff to, I guess we need the number three unless there's another, another motion coming forward. Not everybody speak at once. Okay, thank you. And that is the, "To leave the current bulk water billing system as is." Could I have a second, or Counsel Rudenberg? Okay, and I call the question. All is in favor. Opposed? Carried. Did all three of you want to be noted? Okay, Counsel Briscoe, Counsel Cave, and Counsel DePar opposed. Okay, now moving on to, this should be a quicker one, the Rick Hansen one. And there's a resolution on the table and I would go to Mr. Norburn. The request is for a one-hour extension, I believe?
Through to the mayor, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a letter from the Economic Development Corporation. They're organizing the Rick Hansen twenty-fifth anniversary relay event. A letter went to council previously asking or requesting that the three hundred block of Reed Street be closed to traffic from one to six. Later, we had a meeting with the Rick Hansen Foundation relay organizers and the event was moved up an hour later. So the new letter is requesting that the Reed Street three hundred block be closed from 1:00 PM to approximately 7:00 PM on March twenty-second for that event.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Rudenberg moves. Seconded. Counsel Cave. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Great. Okay, now we have one more. We need a support for the resolution from the February twenty-first meeting of JPC regarding our NDI sustainable plan. Ms. Murray?
Okay, this resolution is that the North Caribou Joint Planning Committee recommends that the Quinell City Council pass a resolution of support for the proposed sustainability plan for the NDI North Caribou allocation that includes the following. Take a two-million-dollar grant from the North Caribou allocation for the multi-center project. Do not take a two-million-dollar loan from the North Caribou allocation for the multi-center project. To allow a maximum of sixty thousand dollars to be approved in community grants from the North Caribou allocation every year until the account returns to its original balance of four million. And allowing the maximum grant amount noted above to be carried forward cumulatively into future years if grants of less than sixty thousand dollars are provided in any given year until the balance returns to its original four million. And this, this resolution also went to the CRD board.
Okay, and it passed at the CRD board. So could I have someone move, please? Thank you, Counsel Coleman, Counsel Rudenberg. All is in favor. Opposed? Carried. Okay, we're going to move up and I'm going to ask council if you can be fairly succinct in your reporting out. We've got the committee and council reports. We'll start with the West Quinell Land Stability Advisory Committee and I'll go to Counsel Cave, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was our meeting held February fifteenth. Basically, we went over the same information that was in the open house last week. Just basically quickly going through our 2012 work plan. There will be three million five hundred eight thousand dollars spent this year, seventy-two thousand for pre-construction, one hundred and sixteen thousand for construction project management, four hundred seven thousand for site prep, two hundred seven thousand for groundwater monitoring wells, one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand for horizontal drains, five hundred fifty-six thousand for pumping wells, five hundred seventy-seven thousand for instrumentation and data, data management, and eighty-four thousand for project completion and, and reporting. They also talked about the, the tender for the Stork Hawk Storm Main Construction, which is scheduled to close March fifth or March first. I think there's a report coming from staff later on that. They, they're looking at, over the environmental tasks, what the, the impacts of the project is, are, is going to be. The field work for the environmental cost or tasks will be one hundred thirty-three thousand for the year. And, you know, basically all the information is available on the website. There's too much here to basically go over quickly.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Cave. Is there any questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to move on to the Museum and Heritage Commission meeting and I'll go to Counsel Briscoe, please, to report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for the meeting Wednesday, February the eighth. I'll start with correspondence. British Columbia Historical Federation sent a letter asking whether the museum and heritage would consider hosting an annual conference in either 2014 or 15. It was moved by Commissioner Massey and manager was to send a reply that Quinell would consider hosting this. Once the reply is received, then a special committee will be struck. Concerning the Heritage Speaker Series on Friday, June fifteenth at 7:00 PM in council chambers, Barry Sanford is coming to speak. In a report from the CRD, Commissioner Massey reported about some advocacy work on a circle route from Barkerville via Purdon Lake to Prince George. And concerning goals and objectives, it was determined that the need for a strategic plan for organization and some social media to increase the profile. And a little bit about gift store sales, they're up from 2010. Exhibits, Commissioner Affleck and Manager Hunter will be working on updating the exhibits at the airport. The footprints in stone exhibit has been featured for a number of years. The next meeting is on the fourteenth of March. And as my friend Michael, Counselor Cave, said, all of the rest of the information is readily available online. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Briscoe. Is there any questions? I just have one quick question and I don't know if it's too early to ask, the, if we do end up hosting a conference, absolute good economic generator, but do we have any idea if it's going to be cost-neutral or what the cost, will the budget be coming forward or did you have that conversation?
We haven't discussed that yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll get that back to you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Next up, we have the Sustainability Community Task Force meeting that was held on February the seventh, and I'll go to Counsel Coleman, please.
First, I'd like to congratulate Planner Turner because we, we are now approved by the Whistler, Whistler Center for Sustainability to engage in a planning process. So the Whistler Center for Sustainability is going to be coming to Quinell and some of it will be electronic or by electronic interaction with them, but they'll also be coming to our community and we're going to go through an intensive process, starting this month and going right through to November on doing some sustainable planning for our community. And we, we have a diverse community with lots of planning issues for our long-term sustainability over the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, hundred years. So it's going to be a fairly engaging process. There'll be lots of invitations put out when we're, we know exact dates so that we can engage the community in it and benefit from the expertise from this center that has worked with a number of other communities in the province. But we're going to be part of a nesting of five communities in, on this next round, of, of which some are within our region, including Burns Lake. So we're excited about that and we'll get dates and whatnot on that shortly. And then I think the other highlight from the meeting is, is, and that's also on the agenda tonight, is the Nasco Gateway Project, that the Nasco First Nation is ready to move economically in, in our, in the Western Corridor. And so very exciting initiative, lots coming out on that, the three-phase power plus the partnering on, on mining and forestry and other activities, geothermal, power generation, things like that. So as far as the task force is going, we're, we're starting to get hopping here and there's going to be a lot of work to be done in the next nine months with this particular task force.
Thank you, Counsel Coleman, and absolutely thank you, Ms. Turner. Okay, next up, we move over to the Quinell Volunteer Citizen of the Year and Counsel Briscoe, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This meeting was on the seventh of February and to, to deal with old business, we spoke about Courage to Come Back Award and we discussed this at length. Felt that it was a wonderful promotion in the community. So if, if anyone knows of any deserving individuals that could be nominated, it would be a good thing to step forward. It was moved by Gloria Lazarin and seconded by Sue Mail that it be recommended council establish this Courage to Come Back Committee to recognize a person. The nomination process is slated for the week of March the nineteenth to the twenty-third. Committee members will be able to review the applications and cast their vote by secret ballot. And Sue Mail will be appointed the, the scrutineer. Updated nomination application is reviewed. Staff to forward the 2012 Volunteer Citizen of the Year applications to the Observer and City Communications for publishing in the Observer and on the city website. And hard copies will be available at City Hall at reception. Just by the way, the Volunteer City, the Volunteer Citizen of the Year nomination forms can be picked up here at City Hall or at the Quinell Observer. And the deadline for these nominations is March the sixteenth. A sympathy card was sent to Jerry Weldon for his passing of his good lady wife, Marie, and now new business, this, this is important. And Lifetime Achievement Award was recommended to be given to Peter Caldwell. Could you stand up, Peter? Or wave your hand, at least? Yes. And that'll be presented at the banquet. And the banquet this year, the price of the tickets will remain twenty dollars. And Legion number ninety-four is onboard as a sponsor and will be included in all the advertising. They're very supportive. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Briscoe. Moving on to the CRD Board highlights and Counsel Rudenberg to report. And I just want to note that Counsel Rudenberg had a successful election. She wasn't even there and she is the, continuing to be the representative for the Caribou Regional District on our area association. So congratulations and over to you.
Thank you. So very brief overview of Board highlights from February seventeenth because there's already been another meeting since then. I'll go right over to the second column there, the Auditor General for Local Governments. One of the directors, Joan Surley, has put an application in as a member of the Auditor General for Local Governments Audit Council. They are looking for five individuals to sit on the Audit Council for a term of up to three years and their principal responsibilities are as follows in the bullet points there. The other piece is Hundred Mile Mayor and CRD Director Mitch Campsall will be running as president for NCLGA. And that convention is being hosted in Hundred Mile House in May. And the other good piece of news that came out of this past weekend is that in 2013, Quinell will be hosting the AGM and convention.
So we should get a letter, an official letter so that we can brag about that. Okay, thank you very much and thank you for covering off that meeting for me. And last of the committee reports, we have the Environmental Advisory Committee, Counsel Cave.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, quickly, this report comes from the meeting on February twelfth. We talked about potential projects for this year. We tried to do at least, at least one project. And our idea this year was to have a, every month, a, a news article promoting environmental good news stories from around Quinell and just stuff that local businesses are doing or, or stuff that's going on in town that, that needs to have the profile raised on it. We also, it was talked about how Quinell is doing well in, for satellite sites for our recycling and how most towns our size don't even have one satellite site where we have three, as well as the recycling site right at the landfill. Yeah, some of our items for consideration in 2012 was a, a creation of sort of a board game that we can take around and just, that has the environmental initiatives and stuff around town where kids can use magnets and stuff. And I know it's, it's in, it's planning stages, so. And then along with our monthly newsletter articles, our attendance at farmers' markets and air quality meetings. Tracy Bond gave an update from Baker Creek Enhancement Society. She talked about setting up tour, a tour of the air quality sites around the city. And also, she talked about the wood stove exchange program. It's sitting at sixty and the numbers have kind of been dropping in the last couple of years, so they might try to target a little more, like older people using older stoves to, to try and get them because they generally don't buy the new stoves, they just keep the old ones. So if you can target them and give them a little bit of a better rebate, then maybe we can, we can move along with that. And that, and they also supported my resolution for the levy to go, or the resolution to go forward to NCLDA, NCLGA, which will ask for a levy on one-time used plastic bags when they are used in stores. So I thank them for that and I thank council for supporting it as well. And that concludes my, oh, Earth Hour, Saturday, April twenty-eighth. Please observe. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the staff reports and we do have, we will be starting with I-9. And Ms. Murray, I'm looking to you from procedural point of view. We do have a letter that was presented late this evening that should probably be read into the record. Is that correct, before we start?
Yes. On I-9, this is a letter from Fioretta McDonald at five twenty-seven McLean. As the owner of the North Quinell Lot directly south of the proposed three-plex on Fort, five forty-three McLean and the owner of the only property directly affected by this variance, be advised that I object to the issuance of a development variance permit to vary section fifteen three seven of the city of Quinell zoning by law in varying the minimum setback of the principal building from interior side lot line permitting a setback of one point five meters from the currently required three meters. Allowing a one point five meter setback against our common interior lines may impact future building plans on our adjacent abutting vacant property as per the planner comments in the development variance permit review. The fact my adjacent lot is currently vacant should not be a consideration in allowing my neighbor to build closer than the three meter required setback. If you allow this development variance permit, I request similar treatment from the city. I request a letter from the city manager stating that any future building plans on my adjacent vacant lot will not be negatively impacted by your approval of a one and a half meter interior side lot setback and that any plans to build in our vacant lot up to one and a half meters of the interior side lot lines will be given due consideration irrespective of the close sighting of the adjacent Meyer Building. In this regard, we request the same consideration as the proponent. You should be aware, we received our notification letter by mail on Tuesday, March sixth with the requirement that written submissions be received at the city by noon Wednesday, March seventh to be included in the March twelfth committee and council agenda. This was not enough time to respond in the normal manner, hence we are submitting this letter directly to council and my son Alan McDonald is authorized to act as my agent with respect to this variance.
Okay, thank you. So if I could go over to Ms. Turner and with regard to this development permit, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm just going to go through the complete report. It is a report that's dealing with two issues. It's twofold. A development permit for form and character as well as the variance as was discussed. The purpose, or sorry, a summary is the design of the three-plex is compatible with the predominantly single-family use in the area and meets a number of the multifamily design guidelines. A setback variance is required to allow the building to be constructed one point five meters from the interior side lot line. Binding for the landscaping proposed in the plan will be required. A little further to the background and I'm just going to skim over the development permit issues first so we can get them out of the way, seeing as though the variance is, is the topic here. In terms of the building permit, the buildings and structures, again, are, have been reviewed by staff and we feel that the, the design is compatible with the, the guidelines of the development permit area. The access and parking, the plan includes two front stalls and then three to four in the rear accessible by driveway. The, this again is, is approvable by staff and we feel that the design is also compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The screening and landscaping is as proposed in the attached plan. And again, we will require a, a, a quote from the developer before we proceed with the development or finalize the development permit and he'll provide a hundred and twenty-five percent of that quote to ensure that that screening and landscaping is employed. The, one, a couple of issues that have come up since the, the, the report was written, we have received a, a letter from the neighboring- received a letter from the neighboring, neighbor from 543 McLean, and I'm just trying to look at what their address is, 554 McLean, so not the McDonald lot, but the lot on the opposite side. Their only concern was that the, there should be a fence installed between the two lots, just to ensure safety. They had concerns with the number of vehicles that would be accessing the rear, that a fence to prevent their children from running into any oncoming vehicles would be advised, and we would be making that as a recommendation or as a requirement for them to add on to their development permit requirements, should council so wish. The other two responses that we've had thus far has been in approval of the, or no issues with the proposed design.
Okay. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Director Turner. Just, excuse me, going to the letter that we received this evening, are there any negatives to them building within the same guidelines of 1.5 meters?
First of all, I, through the mayor to Counselor Elliott, I don't think that we could actually preemptively apply, permit such a permission to have a 1.5-meter setback. That would have to be applied for, by the applicant at the time of their building. The reason that is, is because it depends on the building that they would be putting up. There's a, the building inspector has looked at this building and has calculated what's called the limiting distance for fire protection, and it is within the limiting distance for fire protection from their lot line. And in fact, it's a little over that. So there is no fire issues for this building to the next. What the issue is here is if the applicant, if the neighboring property owner would like to vary their lot line, that would have to be looked at based on the type of building they propose.
Okay. Another question?
Yeah, okay. Just to clarify then, if I can, and I understand that it's tough to work on hypotheticals, but if they came forward with the exact same design on their building, would we be okay bringing it up to 1.5?
Through the mayor to Counselor Elliott, again, it would be based on their building design. Limiting distances are based on the number of openings in the building, on that side of the building, so it would be, it's a calculation that would need to be done. It's possible, but it all depends on the size of the building that they put there.
Okay. Counselor Coleman?
I'm just, I just need a little help on protocol. Like, this, she got this letter on the sixth, so it seems to me there needs to be some further consultation and dialogue, and I'm just wondering, is there any negative impact on this particular project if that consultation and dialogue could take place? Like, is there a real tight timeline issue on this project going forward, or could we?
Because we do have, we don't have a meeting until March twenty-sixth. So, Ms. Turner, could you answer that, please?
To be clear, the application, or the notice was put out as per the legislative requirements, and that's being mailed within ten clear days. So it did meet those requirements, so from the proponent's perspective, the notice was put out in accordance. There might be some issues in terms of, whenever people pick up their mail, we can't ascertain that, right? So there could be applications in the future where people also don't receive the notice, depending on how they pick up the mail, that you might want to consider here. But, that being said, I don't believe, given the time of year it is, that we would be hampered by additional time.
Okay.
Sorry, can I?
Yes.
So if we were going to take that time, it would be helpful for me to see the other lots and the implications of the development in relationship to them on the map, I think. I'm just, I'm having trouble, because we've got this late information coming in, it's, we just, I just need to see, be well-informed on the implications of the other companion lots, where that fence would go, what the issue is with this particular issue here, and just get some clarification. Not, you know, not trying to create a whole bunch of bureaucracy here, but just more accuracy in relationship, because we have two neighbors with concerns. One wants a fence, the other has some concerns about the variance, and we just could see it a little clearer what this is going to look like.
Ms. Murray, could I just ask you what time we got this? Because in fairness to staff, they haven't had an opportunity, I don't believe, to, you know, we just received it with...
The call from Mr. McDonald came to the city at 4:20 today.
Okay.
Which is Monday, as opposed to receiving it, I guess, last Tuesday.
Okay. So council, you do have the option, we do have a recommendation, but you also have an option to refer this to the March twenty-sixth or the April second, and I think that we need to be cognizant of the, you know, the building time, but as you say, there's not a big rush, so if you feel more comfortable, I'm looking for a motion to move it to said date. Counselor Elliott?
What was the second option, April?
Well, March twenty-sixth is a cow comm, which we would just make a recommendation, or April second is a televised, is our regular council meeting.
Okay. Do we, I think we could have enough information by April second then, so I'd make that motion, that we carry this forward until then. Is that okay?
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second, or Counselor Coleman? Okay, anybody else, any questions? Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, so this will stand down then until April second. Okay, next up, we're moving our other I item, which was I-12, and the owner is in the gallery, I see, and we'll move that up. And Ms. Turner, if you could, that's, council, that's I-12, moving to I-2. That's Fraser River GM.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through to council, the subject of this report is a development variance permit. Again, it's a twofold, development variance permit and a development permit review. It's for commercial renovations at Fraser River Chevrolet Buick GMC Limited, 340 Carson Avenue. The applicant is proposing facade improvements to the Fraser River Chevrolet Buick, property located at 340 Carson Avenue. There will be significant visual improvements for the downtown based on the plans that they have provided. The renovations will provide a positive impression for motorists traveling through the community. There is a small variance required for the signage. Notice of the application was issued according to the Development Applications Procedures by law. Thirty meters, properties within thirty meters were provided notice. No objections were received prior to this report being prepared. In the referral phases, the Downtown Association was referred, and they have approved the, provided no objections, I should say. The development variance permit review, the variance requested is to exceed the number and maximum area for signage along the east-facing building frontage, Kinschen Street. As presented in the applicant's rational letter, the signage is a requirement for the franchise image program. Noted that this proposed signage is relatively, please note that the proposed signage is relatively small in relation to the building frontage, and will reduce the overall signage from that currently existing. Part of the review, the subject property has a high visual impact on this community. The upgrades will include exterior paint, sealed panels, addition of a new showroom, service windows, and signage. The attached penises provide the planned profiles. The subject property is within the development core, downtown core development permit area, excuse me. The subject of this designation is to enhance the quality, character, and image of the Quinell's downtown. It is council's objective to develop continuity and an overall improvement of the presentation of the Quinell downtown, while providing flexibility for original and inspired design. The guidelines of this area promote utilizing Caribou theme. In cases where there is strong corporate branding, strict compliance with the Caribou theme is not always achievable. Staff is in agreement with the applicant that the proposed facade improvements will drastically improve the quantity, or excuse me, the quality and appearance of the business. The project will enhance the impression of motorists traveling through and visitors to the community. We'll go to the recommendation, that council approves development variance permit, DVP 2012-28, to vary the number and maximum area of signs on the east-facing frontage, and that council approves the facade renovation as proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Moving, Counselor Rudenberg, seconding, Counselor Cave, any questions? Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor, pose carried. Congratulations. Looking forward to it. Okay, now we'll move back up to the staff report, and we did stand down, nope, okay, we'll go to I-1 now. And Ms. Bolton, this is the, some good news here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this report is to inform council about the 2011 general operating budget surplus. Our year end is almost complete, and full financial statements will be available in April. So the general operating fund had an unallocated surplus of $264,629 in 2011. I've included a list of all the major variances that caused this surplus, and I've also included the surplus for the transit and airport funds. So the general operating fund had a surplus of $524,000, but of that, $259,419 is for capital projects that were ongoing through 2011 and will continue into 2012, leaving $264,629 unallocated. And then I just listed some of the major variances. We had extra landfill fees, higher building permits than expected. On the expense side, our snow removal costs were much higher than expected last year, but that was offset by things such as lower operating costs for the West Quinell Land Stability Program, and lower council costs, lower RCMP costs, and several other projects. So for the transit fund, in 2011, the city had budgeted to take $50,000 from transit surplus to balance the budget, due largely to lower contract costs from B.C. Transit. At year end, $25,633 was contributed to this transit surplus, so it was under budget by over $75,000. The airport operating fund ended up with a surplus of $56,000. Thirty thousand of this was due to the roofing project that will be carried forward to 2012. So I've included some reasons why surplus funds are important. They fund our expenditures until we receive our major collection monies, such as property tax and utilities, and they also form a contingency account for unbudgeted emergencies or unusual expenses. At the end of 2010, our general fund unallocated surplus added approximately 14 percent of our yearly general operating budget. It is recommended that we maintain approximately this level of surplus. So since we are at our recommended level of surplus, the remaining unallocated surplus could be allocated in a number of ways. We could leave it in surplus, we could reduce 2012 taxation. Each $125,000 reduces taxation by approximately 1 percent. We could increase our reserves, such as the capital reinvestment reserve, the public works reserve, or any other reserves, or we could contribute a portion to the City Hall Reserve for early debt repayment in 2015. So the recommendation is that council give direction on the allocation of the $264,629 in unallocated 2011 surplus.
Okay. Counselor Coleman?
I'd like to make a motion and then speak to it afterward. So my motion is I'd like to see us take the surplus and reduce the taxation by 1 percent and put the remainder in the capital reinvestment reserve.
Okay. Counselor Elliott, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Coleman to speak to it.
And I'm making this motion because as we continue to work through the 2012 budget, there are a lot of variables, and, you know, we're working on a status quo budget that does include some operating tax increases, but we're also dealing with the long-term issues around the capital reinvestment. You know, we have a number of different examples in our community where we haven't invested in our infrastructure, so I just feel that this motion is a balance, does a balance of the two, and I think it would be a good use of the reserve.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cave?
Sorry, good use of the surplus.
Counselor Cave?
I would like to argue that I would rather see the whole allocation go rate into the capital reinvestment reserve. We've already argued the point up and down that infrastructure is degrading fast, and we're behind the eight ball, so I don't see why we would not put as much money as we can into there. It may not only, like, that $264,000, that's enough to fund basically that whole Abbott Drive project in itself, right there. So I think that, yeah, I believe it all should go into there, because infrastructure, like every town across Canada, infrastructure is our biggest concern, and if we don't focus absolutely as much attention on it as we can, there's going to come a time where we're going to get burnt.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DePar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll support your motion, and when you make that motion. I can't support when we are basically trying to show a good gesture by reducing a 1 percent tax, but when you look at all the other things I have opposed, they're up and up and up, and so by showing we are reducing 1 percent, it looks good, but on the other end, we are not doing as much as capital. Before, we always did a capital over a million dollar, and now, when you talk about capital reinvestment plan, the reason we are not doing an Anderson drive in a fall, because we don't have money. And when that happens, to me, I can't support showing a good gesture, but on the other end, infrastructure running down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DePar. Any other comments? Okay, Counselor Elliott?
I was under the impression we weren't doing all of Anderson Drive because West Quinell Land Stability wasn't taken care of yet.
That's correct. And before I go to Counselor Coleman, I just want to say that I support this motion. All I'm doing is, I really need to flag for council, though in future, we need to maybe get a bit of a plan together, when we can have that early debt repayment plan on the city, and we had some money and we've spent it elsewhere. We really need to look at making a significant effort to pay down some of this debt from the City Hall. I'm going to go to Counselor Coleman, who made the motion, and then I'm going to call a question. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a balance of trying to keep a tax increase operating-wise down. We've made a number of decisions, but I think there's one way to do that, just so people can manage their budgets. And then the other part is recognizing that we also do need to invest in the capital infrastructure as well, that's a given, and we've got big, big decisions on that over the next number of years. So it's just trying to strike a balance between the two.
Okay, thank you. And so on that motion, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, opposed? Do you want to be noted, gentlemen? Counselor Cave and Counselor DePar opposed. Okay, thank you. Now, moving on, we had Administrator City Report, or City Staff Report, rather, Number Two is stood down, and we'll go to the Administrative Report Number Three on the BIA levies for 2012, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the purpose of this report is for council to approve the 2012 levies for the three business improvement areas. So on March fifth, the three BIAs came as delegations to council. Each year, the city collects a property tax levy on commercial properties within the identified BIA areas to fund the BIA activities. So Section 215 of the Community Charter just outlines a requirement for business improvement areas, so I've included that. So the financial implications, the grants to these organizations are funded through local service tax on the commercial properties in the areas, so there's no cost to the general taxpayer. So the three BIAs all are established under bylaws, and they all expire in 2013, so we will be looking at renewing all three of them at that point. And the recommendation is that council approve the following grants to the business improvement areas for 2012 to be collected by the local service property tax levies, provided all other conditions of the bylaws are met by the business associations prior to payment of the grants. And just so you know, those other conditions are things such as providing their financial statements and including copies of their insurance. And so the Downtown Business Association, $60,000, the South Quinell Business Association, $80,000, and the West Quinell Business Association, $40,000.
Okay, so I need a mover. Thank you, Counselor Elliott, are you moving?
Yes.
Okay, and Counselor Coleman's seconding, speaking to it?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, pose carried. Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Okay, next up, we have the Administrative Report on the Hawk Crane Storm Main Construction. Mr. Coombs?
Through the mayor to council, this report is regarding the award of contract on the Stork Hawk Stormwater Main Line, and what I'm seeking here is council's approval to award this contract. Part of the work plan in 2012 for the West Quinell Land Stability Project includes installing a section of stormwater piping on Stork Avenue, Hawk Street, and tying into the existing system on Abbott Drive near Betcher Street. The requirements are statutory requirements. The overall project has been approved by council, but as this portion of the project is greater than $200,000, council's approval is required. Our strategic objective is, the West Quinell Land Stability Project is our single largest project the city is currently committed to, and the objective is to reduce land movement to a manageable level. Financial implications, the estimated cost of this contract was $386,100, which included asphalt. The asphalt was removed from the contract, as the city will include the asphalt for this project with the city's annual asphalt tender. The value of the asphalt trench line was $85,000, leaving an estimated cost of $301,100. The low-qualified tender for the project came in at $231,400. So, bit of background, the purpose of the Stormwater Project is to link two existing bit of background, the purpose of the Stormwater Project is to link, uh, two existing systems together in West Quinell from Upper Abbott to Lower Abbott. Uh, currently, the Upper Abbott system drains into a low-lying treat area west of Crane Avenue, so by connecting these systems, the water will be piped directly to Baker Creek, and part of the purpose of the project is to reduce the amount of water entering into the ground in the area. Tenders closed March 1st, seven bids were received. Mass construction of Quinell was the low bid. Uh, so mass construction is verbally confirmed. They would start work on this six-week project in early May, and there is a completion date of, uh, June 30th on this project. So attached is a letter from Urban Systems recommending we award to, to Mass. Uh, this, uh, project has been discussed with the project manager, director of finance, and city manager, and we agree with the recommendation from Urban Systems. So option one, proceed with awarding to Mass Construction, or option two, do not award the contract or proceed with the project. So obviously, staff's recommendation is that, uh, council directs staff to award the Stork Avenue, Hawk Street, Stormwater Main Line project to mass construction in the amount of $231,400 plus HSD.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coombs. Do we have a mover? Counsel Coleman? Okay, I'm looking to see to get, I'll get Counsel Cave and Counsel DePar, and then over to you, Counsel Coleman.
Um, through the mayor to Director Coombs, is it common for such a wide variance on these quotes like this? Just, uh, it's a little bit of education for myself, I guess, but it's quite, quite a wide variance on the quotes.
Uh, through the mayor to, uh, Counselor Coleman. Actually, if you look at the bottom two quotes, the lower quotes, they're about, um, $15,000 apart, which is about 6% spread. So that, that is, um, not a great spread at the bottom end. Uh, then there was a number of, uh, quotes that came in in the $300,000 range, and the one quote that's way above the rest, uh, that contractor said he was very busy. He already has three projects on the go, so often you'll get a courtesy bid thrown in, a high bid where they're not really considering, you know, taking a run at it.
Okay, that's all I had.
Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to Director Coombs, I'm curious, there's no way that we could have done this in-house, obviously.
Uh, through the mayor to Counsel Elliott, this is a large project, and of course, we just approved a fairly, uh, lengthy capital works program, so no, we, uh, this is a little bit too much for us to take on.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. The next we have is Administrative Report number five on the Strategic Community Investment Funds, and I'll go to Director Bolton.
Thank you.
So the purpose of information, is that why we're receiving it, or are you looking for any action on this?
I'm looking for some action at the end. Yeah. So the purpose of this report is to receive the attached letter from the Ministry of Community Sport and Cultural Development that includes a new strategic community investment funds agreement to be approved by council. So due to difficult economic times, the ministry wants to provide certainty for the small community and traffic fines grants over the next few years. This agreement outlines the funds to be received in 2012 to 2014. Since some of these funds affect the operating budget, it is recommended that they be allocated over the years to smooth out the income. As part of the agreement, the city must set out uses and performance targets for these funds. So since the small community grants are transferred to the capital reinvestment reserve each year, the variance in amounts received each year has no effect on the city's operating budget. So in 2012, we had in our budget, they were, we were going to receive $329,000, but we're actually going, according to this agreement, now receive $574,000, but we will receive much less in the next two years, the following years. Since the traffic fines operating grants are used to offset operating costs, each time they are front-loaded, the city attempts to smooth flow the grants to provide stable income. So in 2012, we had budgeted $210,000, and we're now going to receive $258,000, but we'll receive a lot less in 2013 and 2014. So my suggestion is that we use the $210,000 that we'd budgeted and smooth flow the remaining funds to 2013 and 2014, just to keep our income fairly regular. So we also had to set out targets for these funds, so in 2009 and 2010, these were the targets we set that council may want to use again. So for the small communities grant, the performance target was to contribute 100% of the small communities grant to our capital reinvestment program. For the traffic fine revenue sharing grant, the performance target was to use the funds to help offset the increasing costs of police. So I've included a copy of the letter and the agreement that we have to sign and send back, and the options are to approve the recommendation to smooth flow the traffic fine grants, to use the same targets and objectives for these grants that were used in 2009 and 2010, or set out new targets and objectives for these grants. And if we want to set out new ones, we could talk about this later, we just need to sign the agreement at this point. So the recommendation is that council approve allocating the excess traffic fines received in 2012 above the budgeted amount to 2013 and 2014. These funds will be combined with the $50,000 allocated from the 2011 to increase the amounts in 2013 and 2014 to $175,989 each year, and that council adopt the same objectives and targets for the small communities grant and traffic fine grants that were used in 2009 and 2010, and that council authorize the corporate officer to sign the attached strategic community funds agreement with the Ministry of Community Sport and Cultural Development.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Coleman, are you moving? Okay, Counsel DePar moves, Counsel Coleman seconds. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Okay, now we're moving on to the administrative report on the West Fraser Timber Park Advisory Appointment, and General Manager Norburn to report, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to obtain council's approval to appoint Peter Caldwell to the West Fraser Timber Park Advisory Committee. Uh, the West Fraser Timber Park Advisory Committee was formed to provide input to council from stakeholder groups regarding the development of the West Fraser Timber Park. Uh, former counselor, Peter Caldwell, was the chair of the committee for many years and has expressed an interest in being appointed to the committee since his retirement. Uh, the committee, including the committee chair, support this appointment, and it is recommended, uh, that council appoint Peter Caldwell to the West Fraser Timber Park Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. Chair Briskle, would you like to move that? Thank you, seconded. Counsel Rudenberg, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you, Peter. Okay, next up, we, number seven, the Administrative Report on the frontage taxes, and I'll go back to Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. So the purpose of this report is to seek direction from council on increases to water and sewer frontage taxes in 2012. The frontage tax rates are included with the tax rate bylaw, which will be brought forward in late April, May for readings and adoption. So the summary, sewer and water frontage taxes contribute to water and sewer infrastructure funds. In 2011, these rates were raised by 2% to $1.42 per foot for water and $1.03 per foot for sewer, which equals $98.58 for water for the average-sized lot and $67.31 for sewer. It is recommended that these rates be raised by 2% again in 2012 to $1.45 and $1.05 per foot. This increase would equal $3.39 per year for the average-sized lot. Utility fees were raised 5% as of January 1st, 2012, which equaled an increase of $16.76 for the single-family residents. So just council policy, frontage taxes are not charged on properties currently paying parcel taxes. So I've included a summary just showing where those funds are currently at, and our water fund is currently running an annual deficit, and our sewer fund, we have a small surplus, but we do have a lot of capital work out there in the future that we need to start putting money aside for. I've also included a chart showing what the average cost for a single-family residence for utility fees are. So for water, in 2011, it was $237.18 before the 10% discount on utility fees. In 2012, if the 2% frontage increase is approved, it would be $246.19. For sewer, in 2011, it was $263.27, and if the 2% is approved, it will be $274.41. So altogether, utility fees, including the frontage taxes, would go up $20 for the average single-family residence. So the next steps, once council has given direction on proposed increases to frontage taxes, staff will incorporate the increase into the tax rate bylaw. So the options are to leave the frontage taxes at status quo, to increase water and sewer frontage taxes by approximately 2% to $1.45 per foot for water and $1.05 per foot for sewer, or other direction as provided by council. And the recommendation is that council approves an increase of 2% to both water and sewer frontage taxes to $1.45 per foot for water and $1.05 per foot for sewer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bolton. Counsel DePar?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question I'd like to ask on this one, this is getting second time now. Uh, last year, we increased it, we increase it now. I'd like to ask the question, if the public can be explained, I think a lot of political discussion around, South Hill pays $520 or something like that parcel tax, and, uh, if that can be explained to the public, what that includes, $520, that will, because public right now hear a lot of political rants around, and I think we need to let the public know what $520 are actually part of what, uh, process, like when you talk about, there was a grant and there was a couple million dollars has to be mortgaged. And so if you can put a clear black and white report or a information out for the public, that will do justice. And the second thing I like to ask, um, question, like these frontage taxes are collected to maintain sewer and water pipes and other system, right? So in case of a South Hill, if they are not paying for, uh, frontage tax, how that sewer and water pipes will be maintained? Is that will be maintained on, uh, out of these funds? These funds are paid by West Quinell, Johnson Sub, and North Quinell. So if that question can be answered, and, uh, where that funding will come from? And third question I like to raise, council policy, uh, frontage taxes are not charged on properties currently paying parcel taxes, written and clear in black and white. I'm going on this one, uh, last, uh, West Quinell, uh, land stability, a form where Mayor Shustrom brought a subject of, uh, parcel tax, it will be brought to the, uh, community and, uh, the community discussion will happen. So when that, it, the council policy says frontage taxes are not charged on properties currently paying parcel tax. So when you are going to impose that parcel tax, are you going to change this policy? That question is for you.
Okay, but I think you had about four other questions prior to that, and I'm not sure who wants to...
Three, two others.
Excuse me, um, we, I think we have three to four parcel taxes in, uh, the south part of Quinell. Is that not correct, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, there are various parcel taxes that were used to pay for the costs of implementing the water systems up and expanding the water system up to that area.
And we've been around this, and, uh, and just as a note, the sewer in, uh, South Quinell is part of the Red Bluff Sewer, so does not pay, and does not have any services from our system, and does not pay into our system. So, I mean, we have had this discussion, Counsel DePar, every year for the last several years on parcel taxes. What we do is that we have a recommendation forward there, and I just want to clarify, when I spoke the other night, it was to clarify some of the miscommunication that was around parcel tax. I didn't say that it would be happening. I said the discussion, if it got to that, after we see if we're going to be successful, would happen at this table with the committee and with the, with the residents that live over there. That is all I said, clear and, and free. So I'm not going to debate parcel tax. We're talking about, at the present time, we do have a recommendation here from staff for frontage tax. How does council wish to proceed? Ms. Bolton?
Through the mayor. I just wanted to clarify where I put council policy, the frontage taxes are not charged on property currently paying water parcel taxes. I should have put water parcel taxes. The bylaw relates to water only, that stays at.
Okay, so I want to know if, what the appetite is here, counsel, for the recommendation. Counsel DePar?
Madam Mayor, I like to ask those two questions, which I clearly worded, and, uh, when those questions will be answered, because I hear that kind of political statement all the time around this table, but the clear information is not provided, and, uh, that's fine, that's a clarification where Red Bluff's sewer system looks after South Hill, but water pipes are not looked after, water pipes are looked after by the city. And my question is, when there's a problem or we need to replace the water line, how that will be paid for? Is that will be paid for the collected taxes, frontage taxes from the West Quinell, North Quinell, Johnson Sub, and other areas of this tax to pay for the South Hill? How that will work out? That's a clear-worded question, and, uh...
And let's just stop at that then, and I'll refer to what staff member wants to answer this question. I mean, it's all part of our overall water system. Ms. Bolton?
Sure, I can answer this one. All of our utility funds flow in, whatever's left over after the operating costs flow into our water surplus. The frontage taxes also follow, flow into our water surplus. If there was some work that needed to be done in South Hills, it would come from that water surplus. And just to be clear, that as soon as the parcel taxes are gone in South Quinell, they will be charged a frontage tax.
Yes, and there is properties in South Quinell that pay into frontage tax that are, are not on a parcel tax, I do believe. I do believe some of those commercial properties, we did look into this last time, and also, we do pay our annual fee, and it is about the entire city. So I just really would like to, if you, what other question, Counsel DePar?
When you say it's about the entire city, that's where I am going. It's about the entire city. Entire city, other than South Hill area, is not paying a frontage tax for water lines, and when it comes to service, how we are going to service on the back of two-thirds of the city, that one area. That's what it's, to me, I don't even want to see a, uh, tax like this one, which is, uh, differentiating the rest of the city, one part of the city. Why is not, if we need money, then put a 1% or 1.5%, whatever taxes, in a general tax, and have service all the water lines in the city, not just this area pays for that or, or that area doesn't have to pay. So it's not, it is a 20-year deal. It's not one year or two year, I can basically see it. It's a 20-year mortgage on a water system which is for the South Hill, and you know that.
Okay, and I do believe, and I think we've had this conversation many times, that the, uh, the tax for the parcel users is the frontage tax was embedded into that parcel tax. And, uh, you know, unless council wishes at some time to relook at this, but I'll tell you, I believe that those folks, some of them are paying 520, some are paying 785, some are paying 825, and they're paying that on an annual basis. But counselor, I think we can get, let's get it back to, um, back to the recommendation here, and then let's have possibly a little bit more information for those members of council that might not be apprised of this conversation that's been going on for the last four or five years. And I really do want to move on, okay?
Just one last question. That goes to my first question I asked. If that 520 is, has embedded frontage tax in it, in that, uh, uh, monthly or yearly payment, that's fine. Then I'm convinced the argument, we shouldn't have to have that argument again on this table. But if there's no frontage tax embedded in that payment monthly, then that should be looked after, and that's what I am asking, not a political statement from anybody, including me. I'm asking the staff to put out what they are really paying for that 520 or 785 or whatever, what they are really paying for. If they are just paying for their mortgage of water, frontage taxes are not embedded in, then we have, then that, that one has to be communicated.
Okay, well, we can certainly look back and find that out.
And that's the question I ask.
Okay, so we do have a recommendation here. After all that, what would you like to do with it? Counsel Coleman? Thank you. Moving the recommendation, Counsel Cave. Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, Counsel DePar opposed. Thank you. So do we need a motion, uh, with regard to getting more information, or is staff quite clear? Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so let's now move over to early approval for capital works from the Director of Public Works.
Through the mayor to council, uh, the purpose of this report is to seek early approval on a number of projects or purchases, purchases to allow for delivery time, planning, and tendering. Uh, it is common for public works to seek early approval on several capital projects or, or purchases. Uh, staff does need council's approval prior to proceeding. Project funding for these projects comes from the capital operating funds and reserves. So public works seeks early approval on the following projects. Uh, first, ladies washroom in the public works compound, $40,000, uh, for the McLean Street parking lot, a Stormwater Main Line, $27,500. On Anderson Drive, overlay paving, $235,500. Trail overlay asphalt work, $15,000. Small residential garbage containers, $9,800. Road rehabilitation, overlay paving, locations to be announced, or to be determined, $350,000. Elliot Street rebuild, $950,000. Rota Street rebuild, $234,000. Stork Hawk paving, $100,000. Uh, a new winch for the crane truck, $10,000, and, uh, replace water service lines on Elliot Hurley Street. Uh, so all asphalt work is included in this list to allow for tendering in early April, so work can commence in early May. As well, this approval will allow public works to, uh, bring forward a report... As well, this approval will allow Public Works to bring forward a report on road rehab overlay paving for council's approval prior to tendering. So this has been discussed with the city manager and director of finance. So the first option is provide staff with early authorization to proceed with the above noted projects or direct staff to wait for approval at the council meeting on May the fourteenth. So the recommendation is to provide staff with early authorization at this meeting to proceed with the above noted projects.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coombs. Councillor de Par moving, seconded. Councillor Elliott, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Okay, and next up we have the administrative, oh, we did that one. A sec here, we're on to number ten, the approval for the spring cleanup. Mr. Coombs.
Through the mayor to council. The purpose of this report is to get approval to conduct the spring cleanup during the week of April sixteenth to twentieth. So the operating budget for this task is forty-two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. Little bit of background, spring cleanup is a task that has been undertaken by the city for more than twenty years. Up to two truckloads of debris are removed per parcel of land in an effort to clean up the city. And the tradition has been to do this task during the third week in April. So first option is give staff approval to proceed with the week of April sixteenth to twentieth or to cancel spring cleanup or choose a different time. So the recommendation is to give staff approval to proceed with spring cleanup during the week of April sixteenth to twentieth. Now typically, this is just a declaration, council declares that spring cleanup week.
Okay, Councillor Briscoe moving, Councillor Cave seconding. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Perfect, okay. Next up, we have for Mr. Norburn, the administrative report with regard to the Asia-Pacific Twinning Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to obtain direction from council regarding the use of the Asia-Pacific Twinning Grant received by the city in two thousand and eight. In summary, in March two thousand and eight, the city received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the province to accomplish deliverables that lead towards establishing economic robust twinning relationships with Asia-Pacific local government. The grant has been extended numerous times and is now set to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Thirteen hundred dollars was spent in two thousand and eleven on website translation, so the balance of funds remaining is twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. The grant will pay for one hundred percent of the costs associated with the trade mission. The Ministry of Jobs, Tourism, and Innovation advised that a provincial economic trade mission to Japan and Korea is being planned for the spring of two thousand and twelve. Details of the proposed mission have not been released, but it is anticipated that the premier's office will make an announcement about the trade mission soon. The city may wish to participate in this trade mission, or they may choose to organize a standalone trade mission to either Korea and Japan, China and Japan, or Japan alone, or participate with the Quinell Shirawi Twinning Society in the delegation that they have going to Japan in July. And the sort of pros and cons of all of those options are in the detailed report, but I won't go over them unless there are questions. Staff are seeking direction regarding which option council would like staff to pursue. Staff are also seeking direction from council regarding the composition of the trade mission delegation and a process for determining which members of council should be selected to participate. And there are a number of options at the near the end of the report. The staff recommendation is that council approve in principle its participation in the trade provincial trade mission to Japan and Korea in two thousand and eleven and that a delegation to Shirawi, Japan be incorporated into the trade mission and that all costs associated with the trade mission be funded from the Asia-Pacific Twinning Grant and that the trade mission delegation consists of the mayor of the city of Quinell, two members of Quinell City Council, and one staff member from the Quinell and District Economic Development Corporation. And finally, that any councillor who wishes to participate as a member of the trade mission delegation submit a written expression of interest to the executive assistant by March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, indicating such.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norburn. Questions? Okay, Councillor Cave?
I would just like to say, we better get on this because this has been on the table for longer than I've been on council, so.
Well, I think we did try and go last year, but there was some other elements, so we do have some, do you want to move the recommendation?
Yeah, I would like to move or do we have a recommendation or the options?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll move the recommendation, please.
Second, thanks. Councillor Rudenberg speaking to it. Councillor de Par?
I'd just like to ask, what was that thirteen hundred dollars spent on?
The thirteen hundred dollars was spent on translation, specifically Chinese and Japanese on the on the city webpage and on the economic development webpage was part of a larger grant that we received.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norburn. And economic development is still actively involved in this file as was was given to them. Okay, so any other questions? Councillor Coleman?
If you don't have, if you don't have two council members, then could you just add another economic development corporation representative? Is that, would that be what would happen? Or can we put that into the motion?
I'm not sure, Mr. Norburn?
Through through the chair. Well, the recommendation was two council members, but certainly council has the option of altering that recommendation any way that you see fit. You could see how many council members submit an expression of interest in going and then if there's only one, then we would look at who else might fill out that delegation if there aren't, say, two councillors that are interested.
Okay, Councillor Elliott?
Yeah, if I'm the only one that's interested in going, then I wouldn't mind somebody else from economic development, but I'll be putting my name in for sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, next up, we have the accounts payable report. I could have someone move, please. Number thirteen, thank you. Councillor Cave seconded. Councillor Elliott, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And then we have the building inspector report for January and February. Can I have someone move, please? Councillor Rudenberg, Councillor Briscoe, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, we have the council information package, but I'm not sure, Ms. Murray, I didn't get any numbers, so.
I have three.
Okay.
Okay, item thirteen is a memo from the constituent assistants to Bob Simpson. As you may have heard, the Ministry of Environment is reviewing the agricultural waste control regulation with the intention of shifting to a code of practice to replace the current regulation. Our office has heard serious concerns from the Caribou agriculture sector regarding the consultation process. The MLA has had an opportunity to speak directly with Minister Lake about these, and the minister stated that the March thirty-first consultation deadline will not stand and the process will be extended and improved. Mr. Simpson's office is planning an agricultural tele-town hall meeting in early March to discuss the agricultural waste control regulation and other issues. If you, anyone is interested in participating, they should contact his office.
Okay, and I'm not sure who brought that forward. Was that just for information? Councillor Rudenberg?
Thank you, your worship. The reason why I brought this forward is just wanted to make people aware of what was going on. I sit on farms as a member and they are really quite concerned about the agricultural waste control regulation that they're talking about coming down with from the government level. A lot of it has to do with places that are on top of aquifers and there's a huge aquifer apparently from Richbar all the way through Kersley South that would affect a lot of farms in our district. So they're really quite concerned in how that's going to affect how they dispose of a lot of their farm waste. So I just wanted to put that out there for people to be aware of.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Rudenberg. Next up, Ms. Murray?
Okay, item seventeen, a UBCM release from the president noting the province is undertaking two reviews of direct interest and expert panel review of business taxation and a local government revenue sources review. Notes the review of business taxation will be making recommendations for administrative improvements to streamline the provincial sales tax. And it mentions the panel members and then it goes into the the Ministry of Community is talking about in order to supplement that panel's review and to meet the premier's commitment to review the municipal tax formula, it's embarking on this sources review. And a review could encompass both municipal and regional district revenues from all sources, including property and other taxes, fees, grants, and other transfers. And is expected to determine trends over time and to consider whether grants are meeting the needs of the provincial government. Both reviews were topics of discussion during the meetings of the UBCM executive on February third. And the UBCM is going to contact the expert panel to express interest in providing a presentation because they have concern that the panel investigating municipal taxation lacks local government representation.
That is correct. Just information? We're all keeping an eye on this.
Through the chair, and that's the that's the biggest point there, the whole lack of local government representation in either one of those reviews. And and that's even at the, you know, NCLGA level, never mind just at the UBCM level. So I truly hope that UBCM can be persuaded persuasive in getting some kind of local government representation on these review panels.
Yep, we're certainly trying. This was, these were appointments by the Finance Minister. Okay, the next up, Ms. Murray?
The last one is from, is item thirty from the Minister Minister of Social Development. It is with enthusiasm and gratitude, I confirm Mayor Shustrom's one-year appointment to the new ministers council on employment and inclusion. This will be a consultative forum looking at ways to improve the lives of British Colombians with disabilities and their families. As a member of the council, you would you will advise me on policies, programs, legislation, and priorities related to persons with disabilities, and you will be able to engage with stakeholders and the public to gain information to form such advice.
Thank you. And council, this is a committee that was very active and then remained dormant and now Minister Kadu has taken over this, so I was pleased to be asked to sit on this committee. I have yet to make a meeting, but I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to do that later on in later on this month. So I'll certainly keep you posted and and be working with the the community on our accessibility issues. Okay, so that's it for the council information. Could I have someone move receipt of the balance of that, please? Councillor Cave, Councillor Briscoe, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, now on our K items, we are moving K fourteen, fifteen, which are are together there, we're moving that up to K one.
Okay, this is the two items are firstly, a letter from our city's auditors, Ron Rasmussen, chartered accountant, giving his explanation on the letter dated January twenty-fifth on the city's travel policy and the way it relates to the Income Tax Act and various interpretation bulletins. And then there is a email dated March the fifth from Pat Morton, state to the city manager mentioning her waiting for the phone bills, which I understand have been sent to her partially. After reading the letter from Ron Rasmussen, I have some questions for the mayor. And she mentions travel policy, curiosity about local expenses included, under what authority is that? Where in the income tax does it state that anyone could be reimbursed for local expenses? She goes into the Income Tax Act on allowances, the employer's guide to taxable benefits and allowances as far as the value of personal use in your employee's income is becomes a taxable benefit. The payment of meals as an allowable expense and they need to be included in the income tax documents. And they also mentioned another document, two thousand dash zero zero four eight three two four, which I'm not sure where that comes from. It mentions concerns of Councillor de Par. Does it deal with local expenses, travel expenses? Why is there no recent Canada Revenue Agency rulings? What about the income tax rulings dealing with issues such as local meals, travel, gift supplies, personal use of cellphone? And under section one seventy-two of the community charter, can you please have Mr. Rasmussen, the city auditor, provide answers to my questions and those councillor de Par brought to your attention earlier and his copy of financial facts and comments?
Okay, Councillor Elliott?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we refer this to the auditor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Cave. No comments? Okay, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, now we're going to move back up to number one. Under correspondence was the letter from ICBC advising the decision on the claim.
Yes, it has the backup of the various letters that went back and forth, but this letter dated February fourteenth from the senior vice president for claims in ICBC. Again, thanks the mayor for her letters, including the January thirty-first, two thousand and twelve appeal to the ICBC president and CEO. I appreciate the importance of this issue, however, by ICBC will continue to uphold the decision not to pay the claim as set out in the two thousand and eleven letters. The basis for this position is that legal action was not commenced within the two-year limitation period as set out by the B.C. Limitation Act, which clearly states that in motor vehicle damages against an at-fault motorist, a person is two years from the date the damage occurred to complete their claim. I hope you bear in mind, city ICBC owes a duty to the vehicle owner to pay claims from that policy which affect their rates only when there is a legal responsibility for damages. And once the limitation period has expired, the other motorist is no longer legally responsible. He also notes there is nothing to suggest the claims office did anything to mislead the city of Quinell that limitations would be waived and the option remains open for the city of Quinell to pursue legal action.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott?
Yeah, I'm really disappointed in this letter. I I think, I don't think there's any other way to say it, but we were misled. We weren't given information that there was a time limit on this. But in the same respect, I think, I'm not sure that spending any more money or time on this is is advisable. I understand that we could go to small claims court for twenty-five thousand dollars or under. It won't cover everything that we've lost and and I don't see wasting any more time on it.
Thank you. Councillor de Par?
Thank you. I'm I'm not even one for one second I'm saying ICBC misled us. The reason I say that because that's not the first claim the city of Quinell has made with ICBC. There's a number of accident, number of time property has been damaged, and the city has a lot of experience and city has also access to the lawyer. And when I look at it, what is the timeframe when staff looks at it? It's not getting it resolved and we move forward with a lawyer because that's where I see the ball was dropped. And this accident happened in two thousand and eight and there is enough time when you look at to resolve this issue. So how long you wait before you go to the lawyer? And to me, it's a money lost and it's a loss of money to the taxpayers and I hope it doesn't happen again.
Okay, and I'm going to, okay, I'm going to Coleman. Okay, go ahead, Councillor Coleman, because I was just going there.
The only ball dropped here is ICBC. Our staff did due diligence on this file and the only ball dropped is ICBC and I'm disappointed in this response and but that's that's my two bits. But I agree, we shouldn't be spending any more time or effort on it. There's enough has been spent.
Thank you. Now, I'm not sure staff, you're happy with that. I know that, Mr. Coombs, I know that you worked very actively on this. Mr. Stessic, we'll leave it at that? Move receipt or did you, would you, would you wish to respond?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, I would just note in staff's defense and in particular, Mr. Coombs' defense, he he was on this thing right from top to bottom. His correspondence was right up to date, his communications were right up to date. There was never anything lacking on on the part of Mr. Coombs or his predecessor that I could see in the file, Mr. Marsh, in terms of providing any information in a timely manner to ICBC. What is so ironic is although it wasn't critical before the deadline, it immediately became critical and was stated after the deadline that we were out of time. So that could have, in my view, turned the tides and it just wasn't done.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Councillor Cave, did you want to make a comment?
I was just going to say, whether we agree with their practices or not, that's ICBC's prerogative to do this, so I would just move received.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to second, Councillor Briscoe? And then did you want to speak to it or did you have a comment?
I'm just disappointed through that I believe that Director Coombs worked very hard in this and I think he was just stalled to death. And he he never stopped trying to get a compensation on this until it was too late and then they more or less said, too bad, so sad, go away.
No, and I have to agree. I know I've had the conversation several times with Director Coombs and he was, he kept getting put off, put off, put off, and then all of a sudden there was, it was too late. So I absolutely applaud staff and and we'll go from there. So I just, I'm going to call the question on receipt. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, move on here that we've got the silent auction request from the NCLGA convention.
Yes, this is from the association president noting the convention is May two to four in South Caribou Recreation Center in Hundred Mile. And there, as usual, there will be a silent auction and we request each of our member communities to provide an item suitable for a silent auction prize that will showcase and highlight Quinell.
Okay, and council, just a suggestion, I don't know if anybody has any ideas, they're always looking for something from our area. And we do have a local carver that makes, does some wonderful carving out of some cottonwood. And if council would approve, I would like to see us purchase that for under a hundred dollars and and showcase not only what we have in the Caribou, but the talent as well. So could I have someone move that? Thanks, Councillor Rudenberg, Councillor. Could I have someone move that? Thanks, Counselor Rudenberg, Counselor Elliott. Sorry, all those in favor, pose carried, so. Okay, next up, we have a letter with, from requesting the keeping of fowl within city limits.
Yes, this is a letter from Melody Stankowitz in West Quinell. It has come to my attention that our city has an ordinance which prohibits the keeping of fowl within the city limits, and I wish this bylaw be reconsidered and changed. The keeping of a small number of fowl has become an accepted and successful trend in many cities, including May twenty-ten, with the City of Vancouver joining the trend. Individuals who participate in the keeping of fowl have posted overwhelming amounts of information on the internet in regard to the process, rewards, and trials. The advantages seem huge. They are amazing pets, provide eggs, compost, and effective chemical-free pest control. Their keeping offers educational opportunities enjoyed by hobbyists. There is ample information available for care and welfare, and for the building of suitable habitat and very little yard space. Information is also available from proactive pioneers of this initiative.
Okay, I've got quite a few speakers. I'm hoping somebody's gonna refer this over to staff, but Counselor Cave.
I would just like to, thank you, Madam Mayor, I would just like to say that I like it when people try to take advantage of local food production. I think now we've become so dependent on, on grocery stores that everybody's just content to go there, and the people who actually want to support local food production are penalized for it, or they make it hard and harder to go actually support these local groups. So I would totally be in support of this, in support of this initiative, and I would like to refer it over to staff.
I think there's a little bit more to it. I understand we're already dealing with some issues on, on other properties, so it might be interesting. Okay, I've got Counselor Elliott and Counselor Briscoe.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Cave. I think we should be working hard to be able to create our own food. But I, just a little bit of information, in case you didn't know. If you want chickens to create eggs, you don't need a rooster. So it's not gonna be really noisy. This I learned just a little while ago. I'm thinking about doing chickens myself. But I would refer to staff, because I'm thinking maybe they've done some work on this in the past.
So I've got a mover here, and can I take that as a second or, and Counselor Briscoe, and then Counselor Coleman? You country boy?
I've done this. And I would, I would predicate approval for this on the understanding that anyone undertaking this project to have chickens, that they also take responsibility for collecting them at the end of the day, and putting them back in their chicken coop, and then not complain about dogs killing them.
I'm sure staff will take all of that into consideration. Counselor Coleman?
Important to know that, because when it gets dusk and they aren't at home yet, they squat down where they are and they go to sleep, and you have to go and collect them up. Having a dog that likes to carry chickens is a good thing.
Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, I think any staff work, I would encourage it to focus on the best practice. There's extensive documented work on this being successfully implemented in communities throughout the world. So if we could put our energy into the best practice, that'd be great.
Okay, any other? Okay? You're just staying quiet on this. All right, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have a letter from the Quinell Pony Club.
Yes, it's a, it's a form letter to the city noting they're hosting their annual Pony Club camp at Alec Fraser Park, May twenty-five to seven to twenty-seven. And we would like to request the city's support for the camp, either in kind or by donation. Your support could include a discount or donation for food for the weekend, or grain or feeder bedding for the horses, or prizes for the children.
Okay, what would we like to do with this, counsel? Counselor Coleman?
Is this the kind of thing that qualifies for council projects fund, like a?
If you so wish. Does?
I'll move a hundred dollar donation to the project then.
Okay, do we have a second or? Counselor Cave, speaking to it? Okay, I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor?
Just, just, all three of my daughters were in Pony Club. And it's one of the best things that they could have done. It changed them as people, I think, and, and I don't think a hundred dollars is overly generous.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll call the question. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have a letter from the Order of British Columbia, but I know that the date has passed. So I think we just maybe can receive this, and that's unfortunate. Counselor Rudenberg, do you want to move that? Thanks, second, and Counselor Cave. All those in favor, pose carried. We need to note this for next year, if there's anyone that we would like to nominate. And March is Kidney Month, so they're looking for a proclamation. And also advising that the canvassing in the community. Did you want to highlight it at all, Ms. Murray, or? Okay, so Counselor Tepar is moving, seconding Counselor Elliott. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have the Quinell and Shirawi Twinning Society, their yearly review and financial report. Are you with me?
Well, there's not much more I could say. They've, they've got a great year-end report showing all the delegations they had, and the fact that they're postponed their trip to Shirawi because of the earthquake till this summer, twenty-twelve, which is after the deadline, well, getting close to the deadline for the Korea grant funding.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to Counselor Rudenberg. Is there anything else you'd like to add as their representative? And I know that Counselor Briscoe's now going to the meetings too. Is there anything you wish to add, or we just receive it?
Before we receive it, I know that they are looking for directive from council of whether we're gonna be having an opportunity to attend a day or two in Shirawi, if we do head over on our economic trip. Other than that, they're just an incredible group of volunteers who are working very hard to, to promote that whole culture piece. And they're always looking for new members, and they meet the first Thursday of every month at five-thirty.
Okay, thank you. So there's no other questions? I'm gonna move on to the request from the Quinell Downtown Association.
This is from the Revitalization Chair of the Association. They would like approval of the mayor and council to place directive signage at the corner of Legion Drive and Highway ninety-seven. This signage was constructed and approved as part of the Community Adjustment Project in two thousand nine, twenty-ten. And it's the same design as the two gateway signs north and south, but will not have the paddle wheel attached. They provided a copy of the basic design, noting it will be constructed and installed by Babcon Industries at no cost to the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coombs, did you want to comment at all on this, or?
Through the mayor to council, I would like to go on site with the Downtown Association for an exact location. We have major infrastructure in that area.
So what about if we approve in principle, or would, is that, is that all right? Or you just want to, we'll approve it in principle with them having a site visit with you?
Yes, we, we have our major sewer line for the whole city in that area, and the pulp mill, the fluid line is right there, so.
Fair enough, because they've always worked very, very well with us. So I would like someone to move it in principle, if they could, please. Counselor Elliott, Counselor Coleman, all those in favor, pose carried. Thank you. Okay, and then, number nine, the UBCM on the Auditor General for Local Government, the audit appointment.
Yes, this was already discussed a little earlier under the CRD Board, about the process towards appointments of members to the Audit Council. The council would review and monitor the performance of the Auditor General, and would not be involved in discussions related to specific local government performance audits. It notes that the appointees must be qualified in one or more of the following areas, which includes local governance. And if we want to apply directly to the province's Board Resourcing and Development Office, they provide the website, if anyone is interested.
Okay, so that's out there for information. We'll just leave it at that. Okay, next up, we'll move on to UBCM Member Release, as far as Local Government Awareness Week and National Public Works.
Yes, local, May twentieth to twenty, May twenty-sixth is, is Local Government Awareness Week in conjunction with National Public Works Week. And this was reinstated following a recent resolution. They will again be offering an excellence award for best practices and best civic engagement. If your local government plans to participate in the week, this category is for you.
Okay, so I would like to, I'd like to suggest, we did make some communication with the two, with Coraloo and with Quinell Junior Secondary here. And I'm just wondering what counsel would have the appetite. They were thinking, one of the classes were thinking about having a competition. And I'd just like to at least have, have counsel's endorsement to write a, write a note or contact. And Counselor Coleman, I look to you to who we might contact of those two schools, to find out if there is any interest to hear about local government, or possibly hold Local Government Awareness Day, where the, the students, they could have their little contest, and they could mentor with members of council. And we could do a mock council meeting. I don't know if there's any appetite for that, but we did it years ago, and it might be fun. Counselor Elliott?
I, I think that's a wonderful idea, engaging the youth. Williams Lake has a youth council that has been, it's been a fantastic project. So I'd, I'd like to see this as a beginning, but to be able to take it even further.
Okay, Counselor Coleman, do you have any thoughts or ideas?
Something helpful to refer over to Fred Rocker, who at Coraloo, who has done projects. He has a, they do a mock UN project down in Kamloops, that he takes students to, but, and they also go to Ottawa with a group. So if we're looking for something on a local level, Mr. Rocker has a lot of expertise in this kind of thing, so.
Do you think we're better to focus over at Coraloo rather than?
Well, I think he would involve the junior as well, you know, in the process. But I mean, it's, it's, if you're, if you're just trying to look at getting some engagement, I think he'd be a good person to start with for referral.
Okay, would someone like to move that? Do you want to move that, Counselor Tepar? Okay, could I have a second or? Counselor Briscoe, did you want to speak to it? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I think like, it is a good idea, but if we involve, ask the teachers from the, especially from, they have political science, and if they can send some kids to be interested, but it shouldn't be limited just to the school system. When I look at it, we have readily probably available in the future is going to be a college student, and CN College, and those, UNBC, we should invite them, because they can get their head around. I've seen some students actually running in the school trustee position, but they didn't show up on the meetings. To me, if we can have an invitation extended to those students, I think they have political science also, somebody interested, and we can use them as a mentor to the little kids, so that would be great. And I will volunteer myself. Thank you.
Well, we'll send some invitations out and see where it goes. Can I call the question? All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have a request from the Island Mountain Arts for a letter of support.
Yes, she mentions that the Caribou Chilcotan Beetle Action Coalition, or SEBAC, identified in their Comprehensive Mitigation Strategy Report an objective to add knowledge and practical business skill to self-employed artists and workers. She coordinated an event last year called Art is Your Business, which helped a lot of the local art and, art and culture people in some business ideas. And it gave them marketing, business practices, and networking knowledge. In the, we at Island Mountain Art Society would like to build upon the success by offering another round of courses. And in the SEBAC presentation in this last spring, Mayor Shustrom pointed out, and I agree that it is important to have support from the communities that will be involved. Now I am writing to counsel for a letter of support for Phase Two of the Art is Your Business project.
Okay, Counselor Elliott? Okay, thank you, second, and Counselor Cave. And just so you know, they came like probably three weeks, four weeks, and I don't even know if it was a month before the event. And that's when I said, you know, if you need letters of support, because I'm sure they'll probably come back to SEBAC, make sure you get them out. So I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have a request from a couple of local fellows that are going over to golf in Scotland.
Yes, it's a letter from Brad Hudek and Craig Delwish. They won the Western Canadian International Pairs Golf Championship last fall, and they will be representing Quinell, B.C., Canada at the World Pairs Golf Championship Final, October one to three, twenty-twelve, at Loch Lomond Golf Course in Scotland. We would be great, but they, and they're noting that they're, it is expensive, and they would be extremely grateful for any financial assistance or sponsorship the city could provide to assist us in being able to compete at this tournament.
Okay, any thoughts, ideas? Counselor Tepar?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate them, and I see those articles, excellent job. And they are promoting Quinell when it comes to, and this council also promotes and supports. And if we can have them as ambassadors, and we can give them some city gifts if we have left any, that would be great. And regarding financial help, I don't know if the city gives a hundred dollar or two hundred dollar, how far that will go when you're going to Scotland. So I'll leave it up to the council, what they have to financially support.
So what about if we just put some promotional items forward for them?
I'll move that. I'll move that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, somebody want to second that? Thank you, Counselor Elliott, any comments? Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, pose carried. Okay, next up, we have a request from Salt Spring Island with regard to Bike Heaven on Earth Conference, and supporting infrastructure.
Yes, John Rollinson noted this island pathways is pulling at all stops to make this bicycle heaven-on-earth event, June twenty-one to twenty-three, with about two hundred delegates from all over B.C. And they note that they, they were looking for municipalities to support rural cycling by, cycling by passing a resolution calling for investment in cycling infrastructure. And they note the support that UBCM has given. And whereas rural cycling infrastructure strengthens communities by increasing the safety of cycling, supporting it, addressing climate change challenge, providing transportation and recreation alternatives. And they're hoping that Quinell would resolve to urge the province of B.C. to invest in cycling infrastructure in rural communities in order to accelerate the availability and broaden the range of cycling opportunities for commuter, recreational, and competitive cyclists living in and visiting rural and urban areas.
Okay, recommendation, Counselor Coleman? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Call the question, all those in favor, pose carried. Okay, now we have a new item of business, and Counselor Tepar, unfortunately, there's no information here. So I'm not sure if you just want to highlight it and maybe bring it back to Kyle, or what was? Yeah, sorry. Sorry, Ms. Murray.
We have one that we pulled from information package, from VP Kowarik.
Thank you.
With an email website of hellobc@unisurf. Do all letter, asking to the city.
Ms. Murray, could you just hang on? It was number sixteen, wasn't it, just so that counsel can find it on their SIP package?
I've had it, had it as J twenty-two, the original, yes.
So it's twenty-two, counsel of the SIP, and thank you.
It's a query, do all letters addressed to mayor and council firstly reach the desks of all elected officials? Secondly, is the letter entered into a permanent record such as the minutes?
Okay, Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment?
Short answers are yes and yes, madam.
Okay, now would we have corresponded that to the writer? Or are we, okay?
Madam Mayor, we have not responded yet. We just put it on the agenda because it was addressed to mayor and council.
Okay, so I'll just maybe check with Ms. Mamick, and she can possibly respond. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we can go to the new business, Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I, I think I did send a heading, what I want to talk about, about the gold.
It got missed, the topic item got missed. This was coming in, just as the agenda was pretty well finalized. It was almost on the website.
Okay, I did send a, just a heading of what I want to talk about. A lot of people have brought the concern up, is about, we have gold buyers coming to the town. And they come in a hotel, and they set up their booth, and they start buying gold. No business license, and no police report they file. And there is anybody and everybody, that includes a bad element as well as stolen product. They take it to the gold, those buyers, and they buy it, and they move on. So the concern, there is a couple of concerns. One, they're not under any basically rules and regulation of a city bylaw where they buy a permit or anything to hold this business in this town. Second, they are required, no report filing system. They're buying thousands of thousands of dollars worth of gold and silver from the people. And another concern, because they are not filing no policing report or anything, so there's no process if they are buying legitimate goods or not. Third one is brought by one old lady, and I wouldn't say old, like a senior lady, I would say that. like a senior lady, I would say that, pardon my language. And the concern was, these people actually taking a silver and just attaching it to something and saying, it's not silver, it's just a coin, you want face value, or just to sell it wherever you want. So, so people are kind of getting, basically, how should I put it in, I don't want to misquote wrong, but, but people are basically not treated in a legitimate manner. And when you have a local shops, if there's a local shop which has a gold buyer process, and they are here forever, and if they mistreat a person or mishandle the goods, they are liable, and there is a process to be deal with those people. But these people are basically come and take thousands of thousands of dollars worth of inventory with no process. So I'm throwing it on the table of the Council. Hopefully Council can deal with it in a some, a process. Because right now, if you go take your stuff to somebody to sell, first they do police check, and they do a report, and they take your picture before they buy. But here, there's nothing, and it is happening in Cornell. And all over other places too, so Cornell is not the only one. Thank.
Thank you, Counselor Rudenberg, and then I'm going to go to staff.
Thank you. So in regards to the business license piece, I know that I had someone call me several months ago in regards to a trailer system that was set up near Mayfield Place, selling women's clothing. And so when I received that complaint, I phoned our bylaw person, and she immediately went down and dealt with them and talked with them, and had them come up here and get their business license. So I mean, part of that can be taken care of, making bylaw aware. The other piece, I'm not familiar with the buying and selling of gold and silver, so I'm not sure how we can get that piece improved. But I know with the business license, our bylaw people can take care of that.
Okay, Counselor Elliott?
I'm wondering if, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor DePar, I'm wondering if you have any information from other communities and how they've addressed this situation, is there, do we have anything?
It's a, it's a basically hit and miss thing, because these people are very smart, and they come and put a big ad in the paper, and all of a sudden, right now, economic reality, if you look at it, we have a crunch. And where people are tempted to give their gold, because the gold price is so high. But they are actually getting shafted, and there's no process. And especially when I call senior people, and they are the one who are easy target. A person like me go there, I know very well, how much is a dollar per gram, the gold, and I'm not selling, actually, I will be the buyer. But the question is, these people are targeting certain crowd, because you don't have those old coins, or old gold coins, or old jewelry gold, which is mostly with the senior people. And they are not very informed, and a concern is, they're targeted, and they're getting shafted. And the city has to do something. Where if these people come, there's the process, we issue them a basically a license and to hold the event, and everything bought or sold should be a RCMP report. And that's how we deal with every pawn shop or any other things in town, or any other place where you go, there is a process. But this thing has no process. That's why I like to listen, Council has the tools to deal with it.
So I'm going to refer over to Mr. City Manager, and is this something that you could raise at your manager's table? You do have the RCMP and others at that table. Could you raise that and possibly bring some ideas back to Council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, certainly could do that. And I would also, perhaps I could suggest that anybody who has information on this topic, like Counselor DePar for example, just send me an email, and I'll convene a meeting with bylaw and Mr. Hildebrand and Mr. Clark Byrdall.
Okay, Counselor Coleman?
I think the Better Business Bureau has been tracking this element as well, so the aspects of it. I mean, there, it's fire beware, I mean, there are some good agencies doing this type of work, and there are some that are less good, so, but Better Business Bureau has been tracking it as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, we'll wait to hear back from that. Now we're going to move on to information and announcements from Council members, and where will I start here? How about Counselor Briscoe, would you like to start? Tell us what you've been doing, and if you've got any key things to tell us.
Just that we, we have Crooner's Cafe back up and running. We had one in February, at the end of February, and it was well attended. We had eighty people, and about fifteen performers out. We're having another one on the thirty-first of March. And it definitely enriches the community. Live music is, it's good for the heart and the soul. And I'm hoping more people will come out till we contravene the fire limits. The hall will only hold ninety people, so anyway, we're excited about that, great music.
Thank you, Counselor Cave?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the last few weeks and this week, I've attended a few affordable housing meetings in Cornell, and I don't think a lot of people realize how important affordable housing is. Cornell is looked at, yeah, we have lots of rentals, but often it's not the right type of rentals for the people who are in need of it. So it's just something to keep on our radar, and it's something that's going to become more prevalent over the next few years. We also had the West Cornell Land Stability Open House meeting, and it was great. The doors opened at six o'clock, and people were there, ready to ask questions right away. So it was, it was good to see the engagement from the, from the citizens and the patience that, patience that they've shown along the way. And also, I'm looking forward to the Man in Motion Tour next week, I believe, next Thursday. So I was kind of hoping that Rick Hansen was coming through town, because I gave him a high five the last time that he came through, when I was just a little guy, and I was hoping to recreate the experience, but it's still going to be good, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor DePar?
Thank you, me too. I like the turnout on Westside Land Stability, and thank you, public. And also, I'd like to really thank you. I see there's people showing up in our gallery too, so, which is a good thing. And also, still, there's a lot of accidents on the roads, and people see the roads are dry. And I have seen last week, and alone on Highway ninety-seven, by the side of Hickson, two accidents. And we are going in the ditch, upside down, and we have one here today. So to me, it's not over, it's still winter. And be careful, sometimes there is lots of, lots of salt on the road, and sometimes there's not much, so you have to adjust your driving, and be safe, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DePar, Counselor Rudenberg?
Thank you. I also attended the West Cornell Land Stability meeting, and like my previous colleagues have said, it was very well attended. And I know a lot of information was taken out of the room. Spent three days up in Prince George last week with the Local Government Leadership Academy with a couple of my colleagues, and they were very well spent three days. Even as a returning elected official, there was still lots to be learned. So I'm very happy that I took that time to go up there, and I'll be bringing a report back next week. Something that's happening in our community this weekend is our Community Foundation Dinner on Saturday. So I look forward to seeing who was successful in receiving foundation grants. And I am actually looking forward to the Rick Hansen relay, also, I forgot about that. Thank you for reminding me, Counselor Cave. The word has, Rick Hansen isn't going to be here, but their group is here for three days. The actual event is on the Thursday, and they have a couple of community events happening on the Friday and the Saturday. And then they leave again on the Sunday to head down to Williams Lake. So I'm thinking in that timeline, surely Rick Hansen can find his way to Cornell, somewhere. Anyway, hope springs eternal, so thank you and have a great week, everyone.
And just a clarification, I think you're one week ahead of yourself with the foundation. It's not till the twenty-fourth, but that's okay, we can tell people to. No, one forty, we're only the twelfth, but, but that's okay. You gave people the heads up, and they can get out and buy tickets. Counselor Coleman?
Just a quick report on Post-Secondary Education Training Council. Now that the Trade Center has up and running and worked through any kinks and bugs and any adjustments, they're going, they're flying really well there. And the College of New Caledonia is examining our campus here. Any further leadership support it can provide to the community? So they did hold a special meeting with the Council, getting input into setting some priorities for the next five years on. And it will affect what staff they hire. So we gave input on, on some of the leadership opportunities that they could provide to our community, and in addition, what they've done, they've done to date, which is fabulous, and UNBC was fully involved with that as well. But this was a focus on the college's part in Cornell. The second piece is, I just want to thank all of our staff in all of our operations for their patience and hard work, especially in dealing with a brand-new Council. Well, not a fully brand-new, a part, a different Council, with some, some attorneys and some newbies. And again, it, I know it's a, exercise in patience sometimes when you're doing this kind of transition, but I really like to thank the staff for their patience and their, and their work. We have some, we have a lot of hard-working folks in our grid, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I agree a hundred percent, we've got some wonderful people working in this building, and they've been helping me out and everybody else a ton. So thanks for that. The conference up in Prince George for three days was fantastic, I learned a lot. I'll be doing a report for next week. The Pacific Salmon Foundation banquet was on last weekend, and that was fantastic. I had the opportunity to emcee it, had a lot of fun. Someone stole my food, but that's okay. I've been acting mayor for the last month and a half, and that's been keeping me really, really busy. And yeah, too many details to go into, tons of, tons of meetings and lots of responsibilities, but I hope I've been doing a good job. Coming up here, we've got the Provincial Pee-wee Hockey Tournament at the arena, and the opening ceremonies, if I've got this right, are on Sunday at seven P.M. There's going to be a lot of teams here, there's going to be hundreds of people here. So come on out to the rink and show your support for the youth. That's it for this week, thank you.
Thank you, and just getting back, Counselor Briscoe? I'm not starting all over again, go ahead.
I, I forgot one thing.
Okay.
I went to the bowling tournament on Saturday, and you were supposed to go, but I went.
Well, all I can say is, I hope you did better than I.
I threw the first ball into the gutter, and, and so then they, they begged me to try again, and I knocked down one pin. And then I stopped boring everybody with that, but it was, it was a great event. There were people there from Williams Lake and Prince George, as well as Cornell, and it was, it was lots of fun.
For the Special Olympics, right?
Yes, it was.
And thank you very much. And I, I always think that each time I'm going to practice before, I used to bowl quite well.
They told me you did much better than I did. That made me feel better too, yeah.
I think they were, I think they were just being nice. Anyways, with the West Cornell Land Stability, I too, I just want to thank, I just want to thank our team here at City, and for all the hard work, and it's, it's ongoing. But it certainly was, it certainly was aware there that, you know, we had been communicating, and we'll continue to communicate. And it's so exciting that we're actually going to move forward. And it was nice to have a meeting that we could say that. We have a Northern Health Forum in Prince George, and a couple of my colleagues are going up, and we're going to be having a roundtable on health. And that will, it'll be involving all sorts of areas of health, as well as on Wednesday, we're touring Dunkley Mills, and we had a tour at Quinnell River Pulp today, and the Quinnell Community Foundation, for sure. And thank you to those folks that supported the Pacific Salmon Foundation, and we raised about seven hundred dollars more than we did last year. And I think it's really important to note that all the funds that we do raise stay in the region. And they'll be putting out some more information as to where the funds will go in future years. So I congratulate, and I'm pleased to be able to be part of that, and our, our team is growing, and I've managed to recruit a couple of my colleagues, so that's awesome. So our next meeting, Monday, the March nineteenth, it's going to, we're not going to have any Council because of spring break. On Monday, March the twenty-sixth, we'll have a committee of the whole delegation session. And on April the second, we'll have a regular Council meeting, and then we'll have no meeting on April ninth because of Easter. So with that, I'm just going to ask if there's any questions from the media or the gallery, and I'm just going to ask you to please keep it to one question, because everybody's been here a while, and we'll go from there. And I'd ask you to introduce yourself and give your address, please.
Hi, my name is Pat Martin, my address is thirteen eighty-six Moffett Avenue. I can only ask one question, so I will ask you then. If you have a non-accountable expense allowance to perform your duties of that office, does that mean you never have to keep receipts for those expenses?
I'm going to refer that all over. We've been all through this, and I'm going to refer it over to the accountant, and you will get a report on that, Ms. Martin.
I will get a report, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It has been a long night. Thank you very much, Council.
Name, name and address, please, I know, it's just procedure. We all know who you are and where you live, but we'd like to hear it one more time.
Ron Campbell? Ron Campbell, and I live at eleven eleven Uriston Avenue in the Johnson Subdivision. I've sat through fair, quite a few of your budget overviews, and I've seen you struggle with what is a need and what is a want. But you know, one thing I haven't seen you do is try to reduce any of the spending that the city has, has seen. You've going to go after new positions, you increase training and travel. I would like to see you address some of these issues in the aspect of trying to reduce some of the spending that the city faces. Resident taxpayers, or at least this resident taxpayer, wants to see as tax dollars go towards sewer, water, maintenance of roads, and that we will pay for. But for expenses, for travel, and new vehicles, I don't think that is something that we are looking forward to.
Okay, so could I just get it in a form of question that you have, Mr. Campbell, please?
Certainly. When you're coming to this chicken thing, please, their manure is quite foul smelling, and I don't want it in my backyard.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell us to start in Johnson Sub.
So I, so I would ask Council, when you're deciding this, that you take into consideration that most residents do not want chickens in their backyard. So my question is this, are you really thinking of allowing that type of procedure to take place in Johnson Sub, North Quinnell, and West Quinnell?
I think the answer is, we're going to do due diligence. We had a request, we've sent it over to staff, and as Counselor Coleman said, we'll be looking at the best practices, and then we'll have a discussion back here at Council.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there any other folks that like, okay, if not, I'm going to, good job. Look at it, it's ten to ten, I thought it was going to be later. I'm not sure who won the pole over there, or the pool, or whatever you call it out there. So could I ask for someone to move adjournment, please? Thank you, Counselor DePar, Counselor Elliott, all those in favor, pose carried, thank you.